This is a discussion essentially and we have many of the stars of the county here with us tonight. A couple of issues that involve the county. So tonight, we obviously have two commissioners missing, but we are at the, we have a majority here, so we will get started. First, is there anyone that has anything that would like to add to a future agenda at this time? Seeing none, we'll move right along to the first discussion item, which is the vehicle registration fee proposed increase. And I'll invite whoever, Carolyn Hewson and Clackamas County Commissioner Jim Bernard to the microphone. Welcome, nice to have you here.
Thank you for having us, much appreciated as a son.
Alright, oh your chair probably goes after this question.
I'm so short that, thank you.
Thank you. I think that's very, you're in our Silver Lead Certified City Hall.
Thank you, it's all so new. We just wanted to come and talk to you this evening on the opportunity that we have as Clackamas County, along with all of our citizens, to talk about the replacement of the Selwood Bridge. As you know, the Selwood Bridge is an 83-year-old bridge. And a fun fact about the Selwood Bridge is that the city of Portland got federal money of $2, $2.5 million, originally to build three bridges, and the Selwood Bridge got the least amount, a half a million. So it's still on the cheap, 83 years ago, and was, it opened up at capacity the day that it opened up in 1927. But today, it is, has a federal sufficiency rating of 2 out of 100 points in terms of safety. And you would wonder why it's still standing. But the reason it lost so many points is because it is load limited and obviously in great need of repair. But it is, it is standing and if they thought it would have a problem, they would close it. But it is close and does need replacement. And as you know also, well, we have the local bridge of the Oregon City Arch Bridge. It is our only local bridge across the Willamette for all of Clackamas County. And so the next bridge that we depend on for local traffic is the Selwood Bridge. And our traffic from Clackamas County is basically moving in a north-south direction, up and down from downtown Portland, Vancouver, Gresham. We do most of our travel north-south from, in that corridor. And only 12% of our traffic actually goes to Washington County for work in the morning. So the majority of our folks are dependent on getting to downtown Portland or into Portland across the Selwood Bridge. And 60% of the traffic across the Selwood Bridge today is coming from or going to Clackamas County, not Portland. And in the future, that'll grow to 70%. So we're very dependent, our economy is very dependent on the Selwood Bridge. The question obviously has come up that we have a very expensive project, as we all know. There is no single funding source for any of these major projects today. We're all trying to use buckshot in order to actually fund things, there's no silver bullet, right? So when we started looking at a financial plan, we as the region started a conversation about a regional transportation authority. We talked about a regional bridge authority. It came down to a couple of versions just working together at this point to try and put together a package for the Selwood Bridge. And I don't know if you want to talk about that, Jim or me just keep rolling on here.
I could say a little. House Bill 2001 gave Clackamas County, Mulledoma County, and Washington County, based on their population, the opportunity to enact a vehicle registration fee increase. And we're really here tonight just to talk with you about whether the interest in partnering with us and Mulledoma County in looking at a vehicle registration fee to not only help resolve the Selwood Bridge issue, which I always tell people, I only go across it if my window's open. And or, and in the future, look at how we might be able to resolve some of our shortfalls, which in Clackamas County, if I remember right, is about $70 million shortfall for our transportation system, which is only going to get worse the longer we wait. So we're here tonight to kind of talk to you about considering a vehicle registration fee, not only for the Selwood Bridge, but now in the future, 2013, maybe a vehicle registration fee that you may be able to utilize.
So let me go back, that's a good lead-in to the full package. If you go to the Funding Partners page, it's the second to last page. It goes through a basic understanding of where we kind of felt comfortable talking about what Clackamas County's portion of this would be. And Mulledoma County right now has already raised their vehicle registration fee and it was not referred to the ballot. So they will be putting $127 million into a $330 million project. They're looking at $51 million from the Fed, they have $11 million to date, they're asking for $40 million more, which is a total of 54% contribution. The city of Portland will also be putting in $100 million into the bridge. They're going to be bonding against their gas tax, and that's a 30% contribution. ODOT has allocated in House Bill 2001, a 30 million allocation to the bridge that can only be used for the west end interchange on Highway 43, because that is the only portion that touches the state highway. And that's a 9% contribution. And then Clackamas County basically helps fill in the gap. And that's about a $22 million that would be bonded. Right now, what we're proposing is a $5 vehicle registration fee. That is a 7% contribution. We are 60% of the traffic going across the bridge, but we're looking at a 7% contribution. And all of those players felt very comfortable with this layout in terms of our small contribution. And I think it speaks well to Mulledoma County and the city of Portland actually coming up with the majority of the funding. The next page shows you if we were to do a $5 vehicle registration fee, which kind of gives you an indication of how much each city would raise if we did something after 2013 also. You can see on a $5 vehicle registration fee how much money is generated from each city on a $5. And this is based on not a hard and fast, you know how many cars are in each city. It's based on a guess at it because ODOT doesn't break down vehicle registration by city, they break it down by county. So basically, we know that it's about a one-to-one, almost a one-to-one. For every person you have, you have a car in your county. So these are estimates at this point. But what it does show is that those cities around the Willamette River with a higher population do pay for a large portion of the bridge. And those cities out in the rural areas end up paying a lot less, but they're also a lot further away. So what we really want to talk to you tonight, we have really two questions for you. And they relate to the whole House Bill and how it was set up. Between now and 2013, we have the opportunity to raise the vehicle registration fee only for the Selwood Bridge. After 2013, July 1st, 2013, we have the opportunity, all counties have the opportunity to raise the vehicle registration fee for any transportation projects that they would like to. So the reason we're coming now is because we need to finalize this funding financing plan for the Selwood Bridge so that they can go ahead and start construction in the next two years. And then the other question is if we were to think about raising a vehicle registration fee on behalf of the whole county, how would we like to proceed to do that? And what would be the discussion that you would need? So I'll leave, I'll leave those two questions. If you have any questions about the bridge itself, or the financing plan, or any of the other issues, no, this would be a good time.
What is the timeline that you're thinking about for enactment of, what's the process you have to go through?
So we're doing outreach now. We are getting a lot of good feedback from the cities that we've been talking to about the idea of raising the vehicle registration fee after 2013 for projects within the cities and the county. And I think we would like to have a conversation with you and the rest of the cities, similar to the library district, of what would it take to get an agreement in place by the end of the year to look at how we would distribute that money if we were to do a vehicle registration fee in 2013, when we are legally allowed to do it for everything? So those are the two questions. We are, right now, we're on track for considering the $5 vehicle registration fee in the next couple of months. And are willing to kind of delay that to deal with this issue around the, doing MOUs with the cities if need be.
And do you, are you expecting 100% participation, or what happens if you have some less?
Well, we don't even have an agreement with each city. Those cities that wish to participate now would be welcome to do so. And if somebody come 2013 has a change of heart, they could certainly come along in 2013 and look at the work that's already been done and decide if they want to participate.
So the, so until 2013, essentially it's just an agreement that we're just going to left it in anticipation of the future?
It would, well, no, it would be an agreement that in 2013, here, that the county had established that under the law, the minimum that we need to distribute to the cities is 40%, there's a 60-40 split. What we would be negotiating with you is something much higher. And we would be setting up the expectation that in future time, in 2013, the counties and the cities would look at putting the vehicle registration, adopting the vehicle, the county would adopt a vehicle registration fee on behalf of the cities and the county. And this is how we would look to use that money. It wouldn't have necessarily a specific list of projects, but we could certainly talk about the needs. And it would probably contain an idea of what percentage would be going to the cities and what percentage would be staying in the county.
Excuse me, could you turn off your cell phone?
How much of a fine is that?
Okay, questions?
I think the jurisdiction will make its own decision, or the county then I'll make the decision for all jurisdictions?
Your county can. We have the authority to go ahead and charge the citizens of Clackamas County a vehicle registration at the end of the law.
Okay, and you're trying to get, I guess, a basic buy-in from all of the jurisdictions you're from?
I'm wanting to make sure that we understand if you have any issues, what they are, and if you're interested in going ahead with some sort of agreement for 2013, how would we proceed if you did raise the vehicle registration fee in 2013?
You've got this gold star that shows the city's contribution. You mentioned approximately to the, to the, so it looks like it's pretty well distributed in terms of population as well. Is it actually a population?
It's based on population.
Yeah, okay, so I presume that blue bars, opposed to green bars, represent those jurisdictions that won't benefit that much because of their distance, or?
Those are the cities outside the urban growth boundary.
I just have a couple of questions. You mentioned earlier that the cities near to the bridge would pay a percentage more?
It's just in relation, I mean, it ends up that those closer to the bridge are higher population.
Oh, okay.
And so those who rely more on the bridge being there and having it part of our system and connectivity and?
Okay, gotcha. And what happens in the unincorporated parts of the county, they're going to be, it's the same $5 fee?
Correct.
Okay.
And we're reaching out to the community planning organizations there.
And so is 2013 is the trigger? Why that is important is because that's the amount that, up to that point where Selwood then kind of comes offline and the funds are available for other things?
So between, the political background on this is that the legislature said that they would raise the gas tax and the vehicle registration fee to, for the first time in 16 years, let's just put it that way, to be able to do something on transportation issues. Because it's dedicated to roads and roads only, it was raised for that purpose. Because they raised the gas tax and the vehicle registration fee at the same time, they felt it was too much to allow the local jurisdictions to also, who have the authority to also go. So they basically put a moratorium on all cities and counties doing a vehicle registration fee or a gas tax until 2013. And so we just got this exception, as the three counties in this area, to look at raising a vehicle registration fee for the sole purpose of a bridge over the Willamette River. So in 2013, the county is then enabled, every county in Oregon is then enabled to go ahead and do a vehicle registration fee, which in this case, we're talking about bonding to these capital projects.
And in that statutory, it's a statutory exception?
It's statutory.
And, and I'm wondering there, you mentioned something like the bottom threshold, where the sharing between county and city was like 40%?
In statute, any money raised at this level has to have a 60-40 split between the county and the city.
You mentioned that that was the minimum, and then you mentioned that it could be higher, you guys were contemplating it to be higher?
Yes.
That would be based on individual agreements with the various municipalities?
I think that would be based on a general understanding of how we would use the money come 2013, between all the cities that would decide to participate in that discussion. So it could be solely based on a percentage and then doled out by population if that collection also shows. Or it could be that we looked at the needs, the actual projects, and decide on a list of projects that we would then bond to go do, which might not necessarily line up with population, right? And some smaller jurisdictions might have a very large project that they've been having to put off because they have no other way to fund it. And so essentially, we would help them raise them up as part of our economy.
You know, this sounds like a really, the needs are going to just, and there's always so many needs and we're all struggling for kind of funding these. So this is, it sounds like sort of a really a good opportunity to serve the community better. One of the things I'm curious about is whether, how this is going to affect ODOT's funding and whether or not there will be some temptation to perhaps use some of the county funds and some of these funds that ordinarily might go to cities to fund state projects. So these have to be used on county and city projects.
So while, while the state would collect it, it must be distributed us. The state has the ability to, right now, they've raised the vehicle registration fee to $43 per year, or 86 every other year, which is how you're actually charged. And we, as the local jurisdiction, come 2013 could go up to 43. We can double whatever they do. And so what you're looking at with the $5, that then leaves us 38. I'm matching, I'm sorry, that's a better way to put it, match it. So $5, that gives us that much more between 43 and 30.
That's all I have, thank you.
It's a lot of money to bond, especially when you know that the $5 vehicle registration fee bonded rates is 22.
What if the Clackamas, if we cut a deal like you made, or a 7% versus a 60%? 7% contribution, mind you, it's due to 60% Clackamas users.
You know, really, I think there was an effort to get people off the gas tax, the cities, amazing gas tax negotiations made. And the Selwood Bridge is in disastrous shape. So, I mean, it was just a deal that was made to get us off that gas tax, which doesn't work anyways.
I think the thing to keep in mind is that this partnership is no different than a lot of the light rail projects that we have in the region, in terms of the fact that there is no sole source for these monies. And so Clackamas County is putting $30 million into the Milwaukee Light Rail line. We've put $20 million from urban renewal at least, if not more, into the green line. But the city of Portland paid a significantly larger portion of that project, Trinit put in money, right? So that's kind of the basis for this, is that we wanted to be a partner in moving this regional asset into a better position because we're so dependent on it. But it is not within our jurisdiction, so we did not feel that we should be a majority funder.
That goes in our interest to keep the employment base too.
And ours, because it's coming to, yeah.
And, you know, we listed on JPAK now that the resources aren't about to be available through the state or federal sources. So, I mean, I really appreciate this opportunity.
This kind of gives us the opportunity that Washington County was able to, the football they were able to have about 20 years ago when they adopted their IMCIT, which was based on a property tax increase now rolled in with Measure 5 and 15 to their general fund. But what they do is they have a list of projects that they ran with the cities that they actually put out for a vote every five years? And they go through and they do the list of projects and they bond their general fund against a portion of their general fund that was, that was originally separate, but is now rolled in. And that's the, that's the relationship they have with their cities, is that they're actually able to help their cities build out and do the projects that they need to do. And we have never had that opportunity, because we're at a different place. And so this would give us that opportunity to have that relationship and that partnership.
I don't know about you colleagues, but I would certainly like to give our citizens an opportunity to comment on this. So do you need an answer from us before 2013?
If we were, if we were to move this piece, the first phase, Selwood, and move the MOU discussion about how we would use money in 2013 together in a parallel track, I'm assuming that you would want to be involved in that discussion and be there to help craft the principles and basic understanding that we would have in 2013.
So we gave you sort of an intent or interest level in a month, which will give us some time to put it on one or more agendas?
Sure, that'd be awesome, thank you. Thank you very much. Now we're going to go and do our public testimony and our jury ordinance, so.
Oh, that would be rather fun than this one.
Thank you all.
Next, we've moved into our second discussion, and that is, we talked about the white oak tree and the solid art climbing preservation mitigation portion of our public versus master plan. So Nancy Kresner and crew. There comes the crew. Do you want to say something else first? Do you want to say something else first, or you'd just be a minute?
Good evening there, commissioners. We are here tonight to get back to on the next steps of our Public Works Master Plan. And you may recall, I think it was in January, no, January, we had the Landes decision before you put the master plan for the future public work.
How could we forget?
It was back then that we recognized that there's some natural resource assets on our property, which I believe John Looson, I always recognized and felt were very important. And the city commission made up, they crafted a condition of approval that requires us to look at alternative site designs, pretty much revolving around the basalt outcrop and some white oaks that currently exist on the outcrop. And carefully, I mean, for us, that meant carefully study alternatives. If you don't want it there, I'll take it. I don't have a copy yet.
Oh, no, 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 I'm just saying, do you know the white oak? Bad joke.
We're going to recycle those. So that'll be my coffee tomorrow.
You probably got it, you probably get it before this decision.
Actually, we're writing all back unless you really want to keep the paper copy because? So what we embarked on, which we will be going to the Community Development Director for a type 2 Landes approval on, is a Phase Zero of our OCPW master plan. And what we really, for us to move forward with a serious Phase 1, where we get into some investment, further investment into the master plan site, we feel like we need to have this, the Condition Number 31 resolved to some extent. And so as our Phase Zero, we have, we decided we'd do an extensive study of the habitat, the value of the trees, we looked very careful at the site geometry and operations and safety. And we hired, I think, some of the best experts in these fields in the Portland area to help us really seriously look at the site and address what we believe was, you really wanted to see a responsible, diligent stunt to honor these natural resources on the site. The, we've got a presentation for you, and actually, the consultants are going to get most of it because they're far more knowledgeable in these issues than John or I. We'll shift to Public Works, thank you. And our architect, David Hyman, who you probably recognized from before, he's been working on our facilities plant for a number of years now, and he will need the presentation. We've got the Condition of Approval sitting up there in front of you, but we also did include the Conditions of Approval in your package. I'm not sure if you had a chance to review it. And then we also have our other experts with us. Thank you very much. We have Jean Ashner here, and she is an aquatic biologist. And she was looking at the habitat on the site, and she'll explain more about what she did. And then we also have Don Richards, who is a very seasoned arborist in the Portland metro region. And he's a horticulturist, and he actually happens to be on the Lakeview Planning Commission as well, I think. So we tried to find some folks that would really be able to tune into what I think the metro area considers are important resources so that we could approach these alternative site ideas in a really, a really serious way. So David, I would like to just turn it over to you then, and John and I will take them as we find we want to.
You're welcome. Thank you. Hey, I'm David Hyman with DECA Architecture from Portland. And so you kind of just gave you a very brief overview of how we got to the point that we've got. This is, is all this on your screen? Yes. Basically, we have a deep-tiered site. We have designed a master plan to try to make the best use of that topography. Oregon City, I think I mentioned at one of the commission hearings, is unique. What makes it unique, I think, is of course the history, but also the topography. So through the years, as you, as you've seen development, or as you look back historically over development, it's really, has been all about how to meet the challenge of using that topography, how to make the best use of that topography and be creative about it. And it's forced many architects, civil engineers, landscape architects to be as creative as possible to work with that. So that was kind of our challenge from the very beginning, is to try to make this make sense out of what we recognize as a challenging site, it's a tight site, and to recognize that the Operations Department has functioned there, but how do you do it in such, how do you redesign this site to make maximum use of it for their usability and to mitigate or to minimize the impact on the neighborhood? And that's kind of been our goal throughout. So this is just an aerial of the existing conditions of the site. This shows the dark green area, or the areas that you can see the armory on the south. And that's the site that we still are in the process of trying to acquire, which would improve tremendously the usability of that site. And then all other areas, outlining areas, are sites that if they became available in the future, we would consider trying to purchase them if they were affordable, if they were available, and if the owners were amenable to it. So it's, that was the whole idea of identifying those as part of the master plan, because we're, this master plan is for 20 years. And then this one portion up here, which is kind of significant to the issue we're going to be talking about tonight, is this street vacation that we would propose. And we don't know if we can get it, we haven't proposed it yet. It makes sense, I think, because of the topography changes, there'll never be a street there. But that's an area that we've identified for, for a big street vacation to include in that yard. This was the master plan drawing, this was Phase 4, we had four phases. Now we have five because we have Phase 0. We had four phases identified. This is the full build-out phase that we had proposed before the conditions were imposed by the, by the commission. by the, by the commission. And the basic idea behind laying it out this way, if you look at that upper site, it's kind of a triangle. And you've got the widest area to the south against Waterboard Park, and then it narrows to a fairly narrow triangle in the upper north end of it. So the basic idea was to group all the buildings towards the center and the back, the south side of the site for several reasons. One is because of the room, because of the space there for maneuvering, but also to kind of push everything in board to allow a buffer along the bluff, to landscape buffer along the bluff and around the neighborhood. So that was the basic intent of that. And as part of this exercise of trying to address condition thirty-one, we looked at trying to, I mean, really wholesale reorganizing the site and trying to put buildings in that upper area, and it just simply doesn't work. I mean, to try to, you can imagine the size of these buildings, trying to push those up into that north area, simply doesn't work. And so as, as you can see, there's, the buildings are laid out very, in a very orderly way, but also allow a lot of room for maneuverability and trucks to move through, to enter at one end of the site and move out at the other end of the site. And we also have a pass-through area here, this is the fleet shop, where trucks enter, enter in one way and exit out the other way, so that there isn't a lot of backing and maneuverability problems with sightlines. As soon as we require trucks to back up, there's all kinds of issues of security.
Can you talk more about that? Is there a different reason that you would do that, or was it just what you said?
The fleet shop, you mean, the pass-through?
Yeah, why you do that? So you're talking about going toward the covered van area is?
Yeah, it was just, again, well, it was right, you can see right here, it was this fleet shop.
I understand where it is.
So that drive, NASA drive, so you can pull in from the south side and, and exit from the north side. And, and what that does is it just allows more flexibility on how you make use of that space, because you, you don't have to provide as much backing and maneuvering distance that you can, it's just.
It's a creative way to solve the problem.
It's a creative way to solve the problem.
Yeah.
Right.
And a lot of street, it's, the rides are just set up this way.
Okay.
You pull them out, you don't have to, and, and then you can get the next one in line, and they just keep moving.
Well, and the other thing is, you might have a vehicle that needs to sit there for two days, and you can get the other vehicle out. So it gives us opportunities to utilize the shop to its fullest extent.
Interesting. Thanks.
So in, in going through this investigation, I'll, I'll have Don and Jean kind of elaborate more on the, the aspect of the condition of the white oaks that are in that rock outcropping. This is, this is the area of the rock outcropping, these trees kind of in gray, you can see, are the area of the rock outcropping. What, what Don discovered is that they're not all in great condition, some of them are okay and some of them are not. The other aspect to it was that, from a habitat standpoint, and we'll go into that more, but there is, there's very little significant habitat in that area. There's more in this area here. So we thought as a compromise, that from a habitat standpoint, from a, from a tree, from an arborist standpoint, to create more contiguous natural space would be far more advantageous than to create an island and having these trucks moving around that island certainly would not be good for habitat. And you'll see in the, the next diagram, these, these large circles are the protection zone that, that is required around a tree in order to keep it healthy. You begin to see the impact of that, the twenty or twenty-five foot, or ten, twenty-five, twenty-five foot protection zone that's required. So the strategy that we've come up with is we just simply, we tried, and we'll show you some additional diagrams that Ken Valentine, our civil engineer, will talk about, about maneuverability, to save those oaks in the center was, was probably less productive than trying to save additional trees. And there's a significant cedar tree right here that we did not preserve in the original master plan, that we're now rearranging the site in order to encompass that. So this dotted orange line that you see right here is the old master plan, the master plan that we presented to you. And so you can see how, how we've changed that. And what it's done, I mean, there are some compromises. One is we've given up twelve parking spaces, which is, which are, those are very valuable to the operations department. But we've also had to push these parking spaces further into the bluff, towards the bluff. So it just simply means that, you know, there's less buffering. And one of the strategies that we were trying to preserve throughout this, the initial master plan, was to really preserve the visibility to the lower bluff, the bluff between the upper site and the lower site. And by pushing all of these buildings towards the center of the site and adding this landscape buffer around the site, it, it really preserved that view of the bluff, which we feel is going to be far more visible and far more publicly accessible than the, the rock outcropping in the center of the site here, which will be enclosed with a fence, will not be open to the public, and not as visible to the public.
Well, plus you added more buffer on the.
On the east side, yeah.
Yeah.
And we added more buffer on the east side. So we still like the original master plan, it probably offers the greatest flexibility and the greatest usability for the site, but this is, this was the idea that we came up with, with the input of the arborists and the environmental consultant. So with that, let me hand this over to Don and Jean, and they can talk about sort of the condition of the existing oak trees and habitat.
I'm Don Richards, I'm the owner of Applied Horticultural Consulting, and my offices are located in Lake Oswego. I'm a certified arborist, a certified professional horticulturist, and as you already heard, I currently serve on the City of Lake Oswego's Development Review Commission. I was asked to serve on this project as the project arborist and to conduct an independent tree survey and tree study for the area that had been identified as the route, rock outcropping. And in, in particular, to try to address condition thirty-one that was imposed on the original application. And then I was also asked to help identify suitable mitigation tree planting sites around the city. In the course of this work, I surveyed the trees just adjacent to the rock outcropping where, as you saw in the, the previous slide, that we had intentionally tried to bump out on the east side to protect more of those trees in that contiguous part of the forest. Originally, the master plan unfortunately didn't protect that big western red cedar that's significant to that site and unique to that site. And there were a couple of locations where it really didn't adequately give us enough space for adequate tree protection. So that needed to be addressed. The trees, after I looked at them in the actual rock outcropping itself, were really a mixed bag. I would rate them on a scale of excellent to dead, they were fair to dead. And in fact, out of twenty trees that were located there, four were in fact dead, completely dead. So you really are down to sixteen total trees. These are trees that are six inch and greater on the site. After looking at the remaining trees, there were several there that really had significant damage to them from past storm events, the ivy that has been allowed to be on the trees for so long, has essentially defoliated the bottom two-thirds of the tree, and that will never come back, but that area is defoliated to life. So even if you remove the ivy at this point, what's left is kind of a wishes broom at the top where wind and, and ice and so forth tends to be a problem. And we also looked at lean of the trees, there were some like these ones here on this slide on the left where that lean is, is greater than what you want to see if you're going to have trucks or cars or even pedestrians walking around this area. In some cases, like in this particular case, the, the roofs were actually heaving on the other side, so this tree, this first tree, number thirty-seven, is actually on its way By its nature, as we said before, the route, rock outcropping is an island of rock with trees and shrubs, and separated from the rest of the urban forest by an existing gravel road. So it's essentially the hole in the donut, where the donut is the greater part of the forest where most of the habitat exists and where the trees have, have developed better. Out of the, the sixteen live trees, there are, there are four trees that are big lose maples, there are fourteen that are Oregon white oaks greater than six inch. And with the mitigation that's required under city code, essentially, we would need to plant a total of twenty-eight Oregon white oaks and fourteen non-white oaks to mitigate for the trees that we would need to remove out of the oak outcrop. In doing so, of course, we do two things. Number one is we're able to enhance not only the site, but other locations within the city, and do it in such a fashion to where it is a sustainable improvement. If the rock outcropping were to be left as it is and the use as it's intended allowed, essentially, those trees would, would start to decline and you'd end up with really no, no input.
When you replant these in such quantity, do you plant them as a grove?
There are locations where you can plant them as groves, and obviously, that is their natural habitat, is to grow in a grove, but I'm sure you've all seen around the city, there are places where, if done properly, you can also have individual trees. With the locations that I looked at, you have opportunity for, for both. And you also have opportunity for planting of the non-oak trees, which will provide diversification with the urban forest and improve habitat. So I also did write specifications for the size of the mitigation trees using city code requirements of inch and a half caliper for minimum size. And within my report, provided the tree maintenance requirements for the new trees and the tree protection requirements for the trees to be retained outside the rock outcrop. In completing these tasks, I think we have satisfied the commission's conditions of approval for application MP-0902. And I think we can protect the very important contiguous urban forest retained on the site and also improve the site after development to include new healthy Oregon white oaks and other trees to enhance the diversity of that overall area, and again, with the idea of providing a more sustainable investment.
So who's next?
I'm Jean Ashner with Environmental Science and Assessment. I'm a biologist, our wildlife biologist, Jack Dalton, conducted the wildlife habitat assessment and, and the chemical assessment. And basically, what we did is we utilized the City of Portland Wildlife Habitat Assessment Protocol, which is really the only protocol that we're aware of for upland habitats. There's a lot of protocols out there for wetlands, waterways, red counties, this is about all areas. So when you did it, see that package, you'll see the actual outcome of that. And it's pretty thin, but you know, that's, that's what we have. So part of that, the wildlife habitat assessment methodology looks at food, food habitat cover, disturbance, interspersion, and unique features. And to this site, the unique features, indeed, included the Oregon white oak. I mean, when you look at the Atlantic Valley and all the development and the agriculture, it's essentially white, that huge areas of white oak, so that is unique. However, the Oregon white oak outcrop, let's sort of call it, is, it is limited for food and cover, and it is fragmented because of the development and human disturbance. And about three-quarters or so of that habitat, of the other story of the native trees on the outcrop, does contain invasive plant species such as ivy, which you see everywhere, Himalayan blackberry and one Madison, that's pretty common of urban forests, and which you see a lot. And as, so far, as far as our impact assessment, we, we looked at, you can look at this two ways, okay, let's retain the outcrop and take out the invasives and replant it and make it all nice and pretty, what is that going to give us? Well, you're still dealing with a fragmented habitat, still have human disturbance, so you really haven't improved the condition at all. If you looked at the perimeter trees, as Don said, those are in better health, you can do improvements in the understory, and you can provide a corridor that's, that's more connected to Waterboard Park. But as far as connectivity to this area, really, there's no connectivity to the north and the east, it's more on the south side, as, as far as birds, because that's pretty much the wildlife we're dealing with here. Some small mammals, but mostly birds. So connectivity is helped a little bit by enhancing the perimeter with or without that outcrop. So that's, that's what we found. The habitat does provide foraging and purchasing for birds, problem, not a lot for nesting. They're going to use Waterboard Park. And so from our findings, it's better to look at, let's retain the habitat that's in good condition, or the trees that are in good, healthy condition, and mitigate for the trees that aren't in very good condition, that may or may not survive in the long term. So, sorry. I thought that all of a sudden I followed him. So as our mitigation strategy and enhancement strategy, we looked at retaining the perimeter trees, removing the invasives, and this isn't, isn't a one-time removal. We all know in our yards, there are lots of invasives, so, and you have to keep pulling them out every year. So it would be continued maintenance in that perimeter area, plant native trees, shrubs, and herbaceous vegetation. In, in planting native trees and shrubs, you just reduce your water use, maybe not at first, but over the long term, it'll, you can definitely do that. And then the other thing was, we could utilize the actual rock from that outcrop in our stormwater facilities on site as landscape uses, and then use it off-site in open space areas where we're going to be planting trees anyway. And then the one other big thing that I saw, that I've seen in other public works facilities, you need to put some type of barrier so vehicles can't back into the resource. So yeah, the bins have a back, so that's fine. Maybe the covered parking already has backs on it, so you can't get into the resource. But any areas that are open, you need to have, to have some kind of a curb gap, so you stop these big trucks from going into the resource and running over more oaks. And the other thing that I wanted to mention is, planning off-site, you could look at it as a regional approach. You're planting in open space areas that provide a benefit to everybody, not including, you know, the, the public works. So you, you have a regional approach, a regional resource that everybody can enjoy with the mitigation, with some of the rocks that are used from the site in these other areas. So that's just the thought too, as far as mitigation goes.
On the, on the route, rock, the actual basalt rock, we also wanted to take a note, though, that that could be, would be used on retaining all, any kind of walls on the site, because we wanted, basically, we use it on site as much as possible and then not lose it through, through a rock pressure somewhere.
Well, my name is Ken Valentine, I'm a civil engineer with Harper-Hawke Peterson and Gellis, and I've been working with David and city staff on this project for a couple of years now. And one of the, I'm going to try to make this quick, is you can see from this slide, what, what I've done is I've taken vehicle templates, using a piece of software that's utilized by ODOT and other transportation agencies to see what the turning maneuvering would be of the vehicles on the site. And this, this looks a little bit cluttered, but it just shows that you can see the out, the rock outcropping kind of lightly shaded there in the center. And you can see that in order to maneuver vehicles around. vehicles around, it just wouldn't work.
We don't have that one?
No, you don't have this one. Forgot to put it in the presentation.
Yeah, the diagram that you just handed, if you were to retain the rock outcropping up there and still try to utilize this portion of the site, what I've tried to demonstrate here is the poor visibility you'd have. And when you're using, when you're moving big trucks and tractors and things like that around, you want to have as much visibility as possible, because you can't see pedestrians if you're in a big tractor or a big dump truck trying to maneuver around. And the shaded areas are going to show you what your vision triangle would be, and you can see it's very limited. So that was the intent of that diagram. The next slide here, this is just showing for a fire truck, for emergency vehicles to get up into this area, they need a lot of space to go up there and turn around and be able to operate pumps and whatever other equipment they may need. This shows an example of, these bins are going to be used for sand and rock and molts over, and you're going to have a loader up there loading a dump truck, and you have to have, this just demonstrates, you need a lot of space to do that kind of operation. Here again, this is just showing the maneuvering in and out of some of these covered parking areas. Some of the vehicles you see here may not look like vehicles you will see there, but the software allows us to maneuver, change the wheelbase to mimic the vehicles that are actually on-site. So again, it just takes a lot of space to move these vehicles around. This one, the trolley, to turn the trolley around up there, you can see you need quite a bit of space. I know that looks like a motor home, but the wheelbase is actually based on the trolley.
So say.
Again, there's a big vacuum truck that the city uses for cleaning out catch basins and manholes and that sort of thing, and then you need space as well to turn around. It's, you can see, it takes a lot of space. If you tried to save that big outcrop, it wouldn't be utilized. And I guess, is there another? I think, basically, the conclusion is that you, if you're going to save that area, you're not going to be able to use it for the kind of uses the city needs and the public works department needs. So you really need enough space, and it needs to be safe when you've got large vehicles moving around, pedestrians using these parking areas as well.
In conclusion, I think we've seen, well, first of all, I wanted to say that this is a work session, and we wanted to present this to you as thoroughly as we possibly could. We also see this as a discussion, and we would love to hear your comments and questions. We've tried to approach this from a multifaceted angle, which is to include everyone from an arborist, to look at the health of the trees, or a environmentalist, to look at the habitat, civil engineer, look at all the turning radiuses and the view angles, and as an architect, looking at the whole layout of the site and how best that will serve both the operations department, but also the neighborhood, the needs of the neighborhood, and trying to produce, trying to have as much contiguous green area and habitat as possible. We've also looked at mitigation off-site, and looked at appropriate areas where oak trees are the most appropriate and will probably live healthier, longer lives, and be more visible to the public than they would be in a fenced-in yard. So I'd be happy to entertain any questions. All of our, the other consultants that you've heard would be happy to entertain any additional questions you might have.
Thank you. How about Doug?
Notice your pictures of potential mitigation sites, including the promenade, it looks like the Shores Park in Canoe Mopassian, even open space that Metro has been involved in. Normally, we talk about mitigation, or usually talk about mitigating wildlife species, right? So much of that area, along a block of the, so it's still what it is, and I think you can see a distribution, even though it's fragmented, of the grove as well in there. I think it'd be nice if you could think of a forest community here, perhaps, by the insular grove, as well as some of the megashadow white oak, for example, and grass and other species that are consistent with the kind of communities that, you know, may, to some extent, the loss there. I think it'd be nice if that can be considered as part of mitigation strategy.
It certainly could, and you're absolutely right, in those locations, white oak isn't appropriate in every single site. But because we also are required to plant other types of trees, and because we're just overplanting the site anyway, because it's a good thing to do, we have the ability, I think, to plant those types of communities. You think about the promenade as an example. In certain cases, small staph or trees might be better, because then they don't ruin somebody's view of the falls or the hills. So, you know, I think you're absolutely right, and those can all be done and would work within our plan.
No more questions or comments? Rocky?
I think I've answered one of my self-proposed, looking at the map, figure four, that has the oaks to be removed, remain, and to be added. At first, I was thinking all the trees in the back of the site were gray, but I think that's just because the gray, faded out trees don't match, or just happen to coincidentally match the dots that you put on the outcropping trees, right? So all the trees in the back of the site are left alone. I mean, behind the armory and the parking strip and all that, above the site and the park.
Correct.
Could you do some invasive removals?
Right. And I appreciate the additional buffer, I guess, in the front entrance area where you would have to kind of shift over. You talked about the parking spaces kind of going more towards the block to contradict, or to counterbalance, thank you. And I guess the question there was, how close can you get parking to the edge? And I guess, in that specific area, it's not a drop like it is in other parts of the site, but I can't remember what the slope is there, but, you know, how far, I mean, what is the determination to just, to how close you get to that edge, and the way to the trucks, and et cetera, as you push those parking blocks closer to the block? And the other thing is visibility. Some of the pictures, I think, actually, the Google or whatever pictures from above, you can tell more of the trees that are there. So I was thinking of, you know, how close do the trucks get to the block before we start seeing them down on the lower part of the city and things like that? I think that could be a concern.
I guess on the, I'll call it the north edge, where there's a whole series of parking spaces, there would be a road trees between the parking spaces and the block.
Right.
And so that provides not only some aesthetic screening, but also just, you know, you don't want the traffic going. Yeah, I suppose, because of that. And then the distance, Tony, is there a minimum distance from the edge of the, there really isn't from the planning code, is there?
How drastic is the slope there? I don't even really know.
Right, it's substantial. It drops off pretty quickly there, and there's a home down below there, so there is some, that's definitely a viable concern. I would also say that those parking spaces, the intent of those was originally, and I believe continues to be, for those to be covered parking bays. So there's opportunity for a significant stop, at a minimum, possibly even a short wall there, if you will. So not only do we have landscaping, although less on that side now than originally, we proposed a couple of rows of trees along there, not necessarily planted in rows, but they kind of, you know, showed out scattered along there, so there was more trees planned along there. But again, the parking structures should have a front on it, if you will, so that we don't have to worry about vehicles, you know, moving through the parking structure down onto the top below or the property below.
And I think that we'd want to look at, when we're doing the architecture for the site, we'd want to look at the roof lines, and not necessarily just the roof, but look at, see how, see what kind of, this is, see what kind of business it provides down below.
Right.
And provide a roof line that is, either blends into the surrounding environment or is not attractive, not a negative impact.
The other thing would be, so I guess it's partly visibility, but, and now looking at the trees to be added, adding trees, add roots that go through rocks, et cetera, on the side of a cliff, and the runoff from the covered parking, and the additional heavy trucks, you know, all of those scenarios added together to me, caused some interesting questions about, you know, how do all those scenarios play with each other together, and how does that affect that hillside?
Maybe Don could address the trees, and then, but the stormwater management is a very major part of our project, is to manage the stormwater in a way that is productive use. So, but Don, did you want to talk about the trees and the rock at all?
In regards to the trees, I think the ones that are proposed for planting along that north side would actually help stabilize that slope, because they will provide structure underground, and although they will tend to grow around the rock for the most part, I don't think they're going to go through that hillside, they'll grow around it. And if you were to look at any of those trees that are perched precariously down along the promenade, they're holding a lot of that in place. So I think it would be a real benefit having that. Bear in mind that the reason why we have fewer trees there and had to shift everything over was in trying to look at alternatives in saving the rock outcropping, so.
No, I appreciate that.
But I think, you know, things like backward sloping, you know, so that you don't end up having increased runoff from, let's say, the rough surface there, all those things can be taken into consideration in the built environment.
Oh, and also, Ken, Ken Valentine, our civil engineer, he looked at the grades in that area and felt that that was doable to put the parking in that area. It probably will require some wheel stops, possibly retaining walls, just to make sure that nothing goes beyond that point. So it is doable. It was more of a buffer before in the original plan, but we definitely think it can be done. And I think in the detailed development phase, we'll probably take a closer look at it, maybe adjust it by a quarter or two here and there.
There's also one other thing I want to add on that. It's hard to see it because of the lighting, but I think in your, see where the parking stalls are along there, there's like two parallel lines that depict a wall, and there's an existing kind of concrete barrier, Jersey barrier kind of wall there as well, that's, you know, right on the edge. So we're really, we're really kind of pushing that out, maybe, from what it is existing, another five to eight feet, depending on where you're at along there, so it's not significantly changing from what we're doing already.
You'll need to count your microphone.
If you could sit next to Tony, you can sit next to Tony, Ken.
Yeah, right over there. Share my thoughts, please.
We've looked at that area, and we don't see anything from an engineering standpoint that's insurmountable, as far as providing for a stable parking area there, and wheel stops and whatever is necessary to, you know, keep vehicles from going over the cliff. It's not unlike a million other sites that, you know, we've worked on around the northwest, so.
It's rocky, says soil.
It's rocky, exactly.
Jim?
Thank you. I have a pretty significantly different take on all of this issue. I have some different questions regarding the plan. I appreciate and understand the presentation to the effect that, given what's planned for the public works site, it's probably not feasible to retain the basalt outcropping and a lot of these oak trees. On the other hand, I think the presentation reinforces my conviction that this is not the right place for the public works site. That's a question that this commission has already decided upon and upheld the land use appeal, to put the place to Public Works Master Plan or the Operations Center at this site. I expect, however, that that decision is going to be a point of contention in this fall's election. And I guess, my question relates to the timeline on this, and the land changes, because, given what I anticipate is going to happen this fall, I think there is some possibility that, although we can't predict the future, that as of January, there will be a commission majority that does not want to proceed with citing this Public Works Operations Center at this site. So, given what happened in March at the Cove with an attempted preemptive tree removal, just to make any opposition a moot point, I want to know what the timeline is for these improvements, and I want to state my hope and request that drastic land use changes and tree removals will not take place until after the election, so that should the people decide through the election process that this is not the direction they want proceeding, that there will nothing be done in a preemptive manner, to the effect that should a new commission decide to change course on the site, that there will not be, you know, damage and destruction done, that it's not the original.
And those comments are highly subjective.
But I think, I think we can ask questions about timelines.
Sure, yeah, no, I agree, that's appropriate.
So.
So the timeline for the.
Tim, for public works, providing a facility that is suitable for the operations and the services we provide to the city is a top priority for us. And the existing buildings we have up top are just, they're horrible. I mean, they're really, they're an embarrassment to me as the director. So we've spent, we've spent a great deal of time planning the site. The, we obviously will do whatever the commission tells us to do, because we serve on your behalf, but in terms of a department priority, and I would, I would say that it's important to the community as well, to provide some certainty that this site is, we're going to be able to move forward with this site, and actually, I was thinking about if we started all over again and went for another site, I'm not sure where we might find one, but you must, the disposition of this site in the future would be something that, would be something that would have to be thought about carefully, in a way, in a way, I kind of see this as actually being a steward of the site and preserving what's there, preserving the services provided there. So that being said, that doesn't address your question about schedule. We were planning to proceed with our Phase Zero application of the Community Development Director very soon after we got some feedback from the commission, because clearly, we need to have support from the commission to move forward with this project. This is about a ten-year phased project for us, and because of the dire needs, we don't want to delay it. And so our plan is to move forward with the Phase Zero. That will take, Tony, how long would your, the Phase Zero land use application take?
What would be looking at from time to submit, we have thirty days to complete and one hundred and twenty days to give the decision, so you're probably looking at, you know, realistically ninety days from when it's submitted to the notice of decision.
And then, that outcome then would take us to a Phase One detailed site plan, designer review for Phase One of the site, which is grading utilities on the upper level and starting for the plan. upper level and starting for the plan of the, um, phase one buildings on the top, the bins and parking up on the top. And we're also continuing to talk to the armory about that acquisition. Doug?
By the time, I mean, when you would initiate grading, what would be the earliest time that could be in, in the outcrop removal?
So add another?
I mean, yes, we'd have to do another phase one, go through the land use process again, you know, without an appeal, roughly the same timeline.
And since, since it's so rocky up there, we may be able to do some grading in the wet season, wet weather, um, so it could be next year.
The usual concern here is that your back may not be really in the way to the beginning of next year.
And, but we continue to spend money in a lot of staff time.
I'm aware, I'm aware of that. And, uh, uh, this one, the late concerns that, that somehow this commission is going to be able to narrow something through before the beginning of the year. I don't think it's going to be able to.
And that answered my question.
But, but, but in fairness to the Cove project, uh, that was in discussion two years before I came on the commission. That's been a process that's been going on seven years. It hasn't been ran through long enough.
No, I'm, I'm just talking about the attempt in March to remove the trees.
Well.
I'm not, I'm not talking about the.
Just one specific piece.
Okay. Other questions, uh, about this? Thank you very much.
Any other feedback from the commission? I mean, it's, is this approach something that you think would have community value? What we are trying to achieve is a, a sustainable outcome for the community where we're doing some public good and also meeting the goals of the facility.
I, I think it's particularly, um, creative. I like the fact that you've changed the boundaries so that you, um, and grouped the buildings, seems to be prudent, create a more buffer for the neighborhood. Um, and, um, I, I really appreciate that you have that corridor that you tried to create. Hope there'll be some, also some neighbors for that cedar tree that are also cedars. Um, and, uh, it, it seems like a less intrusive design to me, the way that you, you worked it out. So I, I'm pleased that you put the condition on and I'm pleased with the work that you've done to implement that to date.
Yeah. And I wanted to say that actually John and I are very, very kind of excited about working with the community if, if this moves forward. Um, working with the community and finding locations at the various city parks or at the metro park or, um, even at some school properties. We'd like to look at public sites where we know the trees would be preserved, um, ad infinitum, but that seems like it would be kind of a fun public, um, activity to, to do as a public works department.
And I'm, I'm excited about having Groves again too, because we've, we've lost some of those. So anyway, the, uh, the other, thank you very much. We appreciate your time.
And thank you for your time, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Can we, uh, piece of paper that we handed out with the exception of the large one are, uh, are something that we wanted back. You have them in, in electronic format. We were just worried that there were so many attachments that you might prefer to have that here. You can have that one, but, uh.
Unless you want it, but we, we are going to use it in the staff.
Oh, this, I think it belongs to you.
Thank you.
Well, I'm really impressed that we've kept it within our timeline as well. So at 6:45, we're now ready to talk about the police department survey results. Would you like to introduce the team?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Mr. Mr. With me tonight is Ben Patinkin from Grove Insight. There is the, uh, firm that we contracted with through the public opinion survey on the feasibility of, uh, being able to build a new police facility. And I think Ben has a presentation for you.
Great. Welcome.
Thank you for having me. Um, I'm going to dive right into this, uh, in a moment. I just want to give you a quick overview, uh, background on, um, what I'm going to say. And I just want to make it clear, there's not a lot of good news in this, uh, presentation.
I noticed that. And I hope that maybe between, uh, when I go in now, you might come up with something.
Yeah, I, I would. Um, you know, the, I, I do want to say we were not alone. Um, we have been pulling obviously on, uh, uh, local levies and bonds around the state, um, and, uh, the region over the past six months for various different, uh, election days, including November and then next year as well. Um, and frankly, I haven't had a single survey come back out of, uh, you know, more than, uh, you know, 10, 15 that I've done over the past couple of months that, uh, have any good news. Um, frankly, this, this particular survey has the most good news I've seen in quite some time. Um, so while I am getting, uh, you know, a little tired of, you know, being the presenter of bad, uh, bad news, um, there is a bright kernel here and we'll get to that in a moment. But a quick thing, I just want to go through the methodology that we used to conduct this survey. Um, we conducted a survey of 400 registered voters, uh, within the, uh, city of Oregon City. Uh, a voter file was used and responded for the screen to the likely November 2010 general election voters. Uh, we conducted the interviews March 29th through April 1. Uh, the margin of error for the sample as a whole is plus or minus 4.9 percentage points at the 95% level of confidence. And what that means is if we conducted this survey 100 times within the Oregon City, uh, 95 of those times, uh, the data will come back within the margin of error, I just mentioned.
Are you using cell phones as well?
Uh, we are use, we use cell phones that were appended to the voter file. Um, now that obviously doesn't, uh, equal the total number of cellphone-only households within the city, but it's the most cost-effective approach to make sure that we are capturing at least a small subset of that group. Um, and I don't go through very many, um, subgroups during the process of survey. Uh, matter of fact, I don't think there, there are any in this particular one, but, uh, you know, should there have been, um, we did have age breaks based on, uh, those who are under the age of 50 and over the age of 50. Uh, it means no offense, this is an arbitrary designation based upon the name of my boss. Uh, when she reaches the 50-year-old threshold, the younger will become 55 and under.
Um, yeah, I have one more question about your demographics. Do, do your demographics reflect the demographics of the community?
Yes, I do.
Good.
Um, we divided the city into regions. Uh, the northern portion of the city was precinct 129, central 35 and 6, southwest 7 and 8, and southeast 11 and 12. Okay. So where do we start on the public safety levy? Um, and we're just going to go to the bad news first. Um, we asked a question, uh, based on our best guess on what we think, uh, good ballot language would have been. And the language read, shall Oregon City construct, upgrade police station, increase safety, improve service, issue $11 million general obligation bonds requiring audits. And then it goes into the rest of that, which is required by a law to include on this ballot statement. Um, we had 36% yes, 41% no, 23% undecided. Um, to give you a little background on these numbers, when we typically look at, uh, bonds, levies, general ballot measures, um, in general, we typically like to have, uh, support start at the 60% mark. Uh, we like to see strong support at 40% uh, or more, reason being on a, uh, um, on any tax measure particularly, um, you can expect support to decrease during the course of a campaign rather than increase. So you want to start with a cushion. Uh, obviously in this case, we don't get to either of those measures of viability. Um, there is however, a lot of fluidity in the electorate. Um, uh, we have only 21% who are voting strongly, but also only 24% voting no strongly. So only about less than half of the electorate actually have strong opinions one way or the other, which is the first kernel of good news. Um, small kernel nonetheless, but good news, um, that we see here. And we'll get to more of that later. More to the bad news. Um, the bond suffers from recession woes. And as we'll see in the next few slides, uh, it's not what you would put in front of voters that they're upset with. It's, uh, it's not that they're upset with the idea behind a new, uh, facility for the police department. It's just that they are, you know, voters are suffering from the recession. Um, and you see that in this set of questions. Um, we asked a series of questions. How well do these words and phrases describe, uh, the bond? And this, this was asked at the end of the survey after we've gone through all the different particulars that we've gone into the bond. Um, the bars represent those who say, yes, this describes it net well, so very well and somewhat well. So as you can see here, majorities of voters believe that it will put a strain on seniors, low-income families and struggling families at 60%, believe that's descriptive of the bond. Uh, it will make property taxes too high, 58%, something we can't afford right now, 55%. Top three descriptors are things on the negative side that, um, are indicators of, uh, voters feeling tapped out. Um, and you can see the, uh, very descriptive, which means they feel these opinions strongly. Uh, also fairly high compared to other, uh, surveys that were done, 36% for, uh, putting a strain on seniors and families, 31% for making property taxes too high, 32% something we can't afford right now. The bottom bar is another thing that we need to consider as well, which is that voters don't see this as a high priority. And we'll see that in the next few slides. That is besides the, uh, uh, issue in terms of the economy, they also just don't see it as a priority. We'll get into that in a moment. These are some of the things that we asked. We asked a series of questions, uh, describing the various, uh, aspects of the bond, what it would include, uh, accountability measures, you know, what it would do, et cetera, et cetera. And as you can tell, voters are very supportive. I mean, you have numbers and 75%, 74% who favor the top three option accountability mechanisms. Obviously, once again, I think that's a, a function of feeling tapped out and wanting to make sure that tax dollars are spent the way they would like them to be spent. Um, but then also you have voters, 71% saying they favor, um, making sure that the bond, uh, builds an interview room that provides victims who have been traumatized by crimes, more comfortable surroundings. You have 7% who favor, uh, replacing the existing buildings, aging generator purchased in 1948 to ensure continued police service during a citywide emergency. Um, and then on down the list. And as you can see with the, uh, hold in statements, um, the things that voters like include safety, improving response times, criminal conditions overcrowding, um, safety, service, and then also accountability.
Are you clear, I was confused all the way through because you use safety in two ways. Are you clear in your mind that the voters understood safety of police officers versus community safety? Because you use them sometimes a little bit interchangeably.
Yeah, um, I do. Cause I think at the same time, while you have the middle tier warrant notes, enhanced, uh, police, uh, police.
I see clearly here.
You also have continued police service during a citywide emergency. That's also top tier, that's safety, um, improved response times and enhanced police, uh, ability to combat crime and secure criminal convictions.
On this though, you didn't talk about really community safety at all.
We don't mention it per se, but I would, I would hypothesize that when you discuss improving response times, enhancing ability to combat crime, they're also equating that with their own safety and their neighbor's safety. Another thing. Um, but I think the big thing to take away from this is, uh, this looks at a lot of, a lot of the different, uh, mess pieces of this, um, of this bond, and they are all wildly supported by voters. Um, so while you do have, uh, and this goes back to what we were discussing earlier, which is it's not you, it's the economy. Um, this slide gets to the, uh, other aspect that I was discussing earlier as an obstacle. It's, um, not just the economy, it's a feeling that it's not a priority. And the reason why we can say that is we asked two separate questions. Generally speaking, how satisfied are you with the quality of service provided by the Oregon City Police Department? Um, and then also we asked another question, how, how satisfied are you with how the Oregon City Police Department spends the tax dollars it receives? Uh, the blue bars represent, uh, perceptions on quality service, green on expenditure of tax dollars. Quality of service first, voters are very satisfied with the service provided by the police, by the police department.
88%?
Yes. Uh, 88%, 51% very satisfied. I mean, that's, you know, strongly held conviction that they're getting good service. Um, and even, you know, in terms of expenditure of tax dollars, while it's still, you know, plurality and a somewhat satisfied, uh, bar at 39%, um, you've still got 64% who say that they are satisfied with, uh, how the police department spends the tax dollars. And then very few, um, who say that, that they're not satisfied with either measure. Um, in terms of taxes, 28% just say they're just not sure. They don't know enough. Um, so this gets to the not a priority. They're feeling like they're getting a good bang for the buck right now and I believe don't feel a need to, um, for the bond. And this next slide, we asked a follow-up question at the beginning of the survey. We asked that first question, you know, just restating what we think, you know, accurate bond language would be. And then we provided a little bit more context, giving the best case explanation of explaining the need and, uh, the reason why this bond is necessary. In that case, we're only able to build, uh, support to 49%. Uh, opposition is at 36. Um, 14% are undecided. Um, and while, once again, this scrap does show the fluidity that I discussed in the electorate, we are able to build a yes vote, we're still under 50%, meaning that you would still need to persuade more people in order to get past that 50 plus one mark. And now after going through all of the different explanations and aspects of what the bond would include, accountability options, safety, uh, reducing overcrowding, all of those different things, we're still only able to get to 50% yes at the end of the survey. Start at 36, we get to 50. Um, opposition remains, uh, fairly similar, uh, within the margin of error, 41% started saying no, 39% remain at the end. Um, and this is a kernel of good news. It goes back to the fluid, fluidity thing I was just mentioning. Um, you can persuade people to support this, but it would involve a sustained effort, as I'll get, you know, get to later on. And that is the positive mark. I have not been able to see in many surveys, um, the ability to move the electorate on a, uh, tax measure such that is this. So moving forward, what are the next steps? There are three critical words about the bond proposal. Needed for safety. Um, it's needed for safety and combat crime, uh, in any public education, um, effort. Uh, those three things would need to be repeated over and over and over again. Um, and then secondly, it modernizes the city's police facility, making needed changes to ensure safety and to combat crime. Now, we didn't ask just those, uh, negatives in terms of how people would describe the bond at the end of the survey. We also asked some positive phrases and words. And in this case, um, after learning more about the bond, uh, the voters are very, are likely to say a lot of these things are, uh, descriptive. It enhances safety, 70% say that it would do that when they learn more about the bond, that it ensures service even in an emergency, creates a modern facility, all of those at 70%. And then going down the list, um, even protects our unique quality of life, 53% believe that. Um, so, you know, once again, once you are able to explain, um, what this bond does, the needs that it addresses, um, the safety concerns, um, that it addresses, um, you are able to make a substantial benefit. Um, you are able to make a case for this, but it, you would, it would, it would require a sustained education effort to get there. We do some regression analysis, which is a statistical modeling technique that can be used to help determine what messages predict support and opposition to a bond measure. Um, in this case, we did that analysis on the traits you were just looking at. Um, the three things that if voters and residents were more aware of, uh, moving forward about this bond, um, the three traits being enhanced safety for police officers, officers and staff, that it's necessary and that it creates some modern police facility. Uh, residents understand, uh, and believe those three things, they will be more likely, uh, to support a bond in the future.
Okay. Is that with the, is that with the overlay of, uh, improved safety for the community and combat crime? Those are like number one and two. And then these are also some, uh, messages that could be.
Layered on.
Layered on. Okay.
Regression.
Uh, the actual ballot ask at the front of the, uh, survey. So the first question, do you support or oppose this measure of his language?
And if you agree, do you wish to support or oppose it? I'm not sure. I'm still not sure.
So what we would do is we, uh, go, I mean, it, we go through, we, we look at these questions and then you, and then we regress it on the dependent variable, which is the first, uh, the, it was like the third question we asked, which is, um, here's the, uh, bond language. Um, having heard this, do you support or oppose this bond? And then, um, you do a scaling method and based upon responses to that question and then responses to these, we're able to predict that these three, uh, traits drive support for the measure. You know, it's a little complicated.
It was an accusation, so not for him.
Okay. Okay.
Okay. Please continue.
Well, did I, did I do a good enough job, Doug?
Well, I bet, I mean, I guess good with the talking about. Maybe, maybe I go over.
Um, just some language nuances that we were looking at. Um, the, uh, as would be predicted based upon earlier, you know, earlier slides, if you're discussing the cost of the measure by itself, there's going to be less support for it than if you were also to include an explanation for what this bond does. So when we ask. So when we ask, when we state this measure would cost the average homeowner about five dollars and thirty-two cents a month, and would increase police employee's safety, improve response times, enhance police ability to combat crime, and secure criminal convictions, sixty-six percent favor the measure. When you just say this will cost the average homeowner five dollars and thirty-two cents, they're less supportive. So, to the extent that there is a public education campaign, making sure that cost is paired with service is an important aspect to make sure it's included. And then a couple other important language nuances we noticed. Interview rooms should focus on victims traumatized by crime, not solicit suspect confessions. When discussing future growth, talk about how this facility will last through twenty-three, not for the next twenty years. And so next steps, we believe, in terms of the campaign, create and execute an education effort highlighting reasons why any police facility is needed, identify potential spokespersons and audience for that education effort, and then finally determine a tentative election date for the bond letter. That's what I got for you.
Any questions? Thanks so much for the good news.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, actually, I actually do. So, formalize money. I chatted with the city manager about this. I have gotten a number of emails that I've shared with the city manager from constituents, many of which have been completely unsolicited, and the kind of uniformity and unanimity of them have impressed me. And we've actually gotten some comments to this effect during public comment here, during commission meetings and otherwise. I'm given a sense in the community from these emails and people I've chatted with that there is actually a lot of support for a joint bond, for a library and a police station at once as a joint bond issuance. Can you tell from what you've gotten from your surveys whether, if you would put that question as far as a joint bond, how, was the response or would that be a, would that necessitate a completely new and separate survey with different questions, et cetera?
It would.
And I'll throw this out to my fellow commissioners, whether it might merit doing such a survey. And, you know, I can share the same email as the city manager, but I'm sure, you know, a lot of the folks that have written me have been, are, you know, are more politically active folks than, you know, the general cross-section of the population. But I've been so impressed by the uniformity of, from people who might assume, but know each other, and how at least this little cross-section of the population is thinking the same way on this. I really want to explore that and see if it would, if it would change the survey outcomes, if it, you know, if it might enhance the prospects for financing both the police station and the library. And would you have any thought on that?
I'm sorry.
You know, I'd like an introduction answer before you give the professional one. I sit on a number of regional committees that are doing surveys like this about various different aspects of money raising. And first of all, when the cost goes up, the support goes down. So that would be my response to adding more money to a survey. Because I just put from what I've seen around the region. So now, professionals, Bob.
That's an excellent answer. I did do the polling for the Clackamas County Library Levy. Was it O A? And there was resounding support for that. And libraries definitely do have some positive qualities in terms of their massive potential, which is what they provide to the community, what they can talk about in terms of their services and for children, job training, et cetera. And police obviously also offer different aspects. And also, as you tell, voters are very supportive of different pieces. I would say, however, that regardless of the support, O A was an anomaly. I got a number, there were a number of different measures passed, including P C C, which, you know, largest bond levy in Oregon history. That I just, if they were put on the ballot for this year or even next, I have a big to say whether or not they would be able to get through just because of the economy.
I was just gonna say, we had a history of this. We had the, initially had the fire bond and the library bond together, and went down badly. We separated out the, and this is a few years ago, the library, but the first part of the fire bond and the library bond, a fire bond passed, the library bond went down. And so, in this case, the public safety, when she won out, here you have the public safety is already pretty low. So I'm just gonna shoot out a word.
Just to be fair, there was anomaly there. Fire departments said they wouldn't serve anymore. So we didn't have.
No, 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 no. This is from the Oregon City Fire Department. This is before we ever went to.
Oh, okay.
I'm talking about, I'm talking about the local staff and, oh, station, and that was it. Yeah, this is my failure.
Oh, okay. I mean, one thing I would say is that it's, once again, it's not you, it's the economy. And to the extent that the economy continues to show growth, continues to improve over the next six months to a year, and to the extent that there is a effort to raise awareness about the needs of the police department within the community, discussing the different services that a new police facility would be able to provide the community, I would say those two in tandem could create a different environment for this bond in two thousand and eleven. But as it is right now, you know, spending money on a new, on another poll to try and see about a combined effort, I think while people might support it in concept, they would oppose it because of the pocketbook right now.
But I think the other downside for that would be that there's general knowledge beginning to be aware that we've solved our library problem, that we're moving into a.
It's another hurdle, yes.
So that would be a hurdle as well. Anybody else? Thank you very much. I guess we've got to work it out for us, and this really gives us a good baseline to jump off of. Any need a break? We'll go plunging ahead. Okay, great. Let's do, the next item on our discussion agenda is the strategic investment zone. And I see the remaining county representative, Renata Engelberg is here to, Dan, are you continuing? Great. Strategic investment zone, we discussed that, I think, believe twice before. So, very talented.
Introduce the topic. We actually brought this up, yeah, two times. Once at a work section and once at a city commission meeting. And I'm just gonna briefly remind you of the basic parts of this program, and then Renata can go into some details. And again, this is a result of some legislation at the state level, which grants authority of the counties in Oregon to abate taxes on a, for a fifteen-year period for traded sector businesses. And legislation is pretty specific about what a traded sector business is. And it also sets thresholds for traded sectors at a hundred million in investment for areas that are urban and twenty-five million for areas that are rural. One of the maps that you see that was just handed out is the proposed boundary for Oregon City. And you can see that we're actually in a pretty unique situation. If you look at the area along Beaver Creek and Loda Road, that's an area that was brought into our urban growth boundary after two thousand and two, so it's eligible for designation as a rural area, which means the threshold is much lower at twenty-five million. So there is some attractiveness in terms of businesses actually being interested to invest in Oregon City. The other nice thing about that area is it's an area that, you know, we had approved in our concept plan for industrial uses. And I think trying to get that initial business located to start a cluster of businesses in that area is, you know, this may be a program with some advantage. I had an opportunity to speak with Gresham. They were one of the first communities in Oregon to actually have a program. They've had a program in place for about a year now. They are designated urban, so any business has to meet that one hundred million dollar threshold. And they haven't actually had anyone apply, any business that had that sort of investment. And the other thing that they told me that I thought was interesting was that for a business to really be interested in this program, they really have to invest more than a hundred thousand. Because the first hundred thousand dollars is not tax-abated. That still goes to the tax and districts, still goes to the city. It's that amount over a hundred thousand dollars that they get in abatement. A million, sorry. That would be a really good deal. Yeah. So the point is, is that, at least in the Gresham experience, for them, for a business to be even interested, we're at the two hundred, two hundred thousand million dollar level before a business would really be interested. And the other thing that Gresham has is they have enterprise zones, and they felt that enterprise zones, at least for them, was much more effective. The threshold was lower for tax-abatement. And they've actually had some success in that area. In Oregon City, we don't have the demographics, terms of average incomes to qualify for enterprise zones. So this is really one of the few opportunities we would have to consider these type of zones. So that's a brief summary, and I think Renata had a handout and summarized a little bit more about the details and what some of the other cities in Clackamas County are doing.
Thanks for coming, Dan.
Thank you, my pleasure. Wanted to highlight the cities that are participating today and what decision they have made, just to inform your decision tonight. Lake ushwego, Happy Valley, or non.
Yeah, we don't make decisions, they're not noticed. That way it's just discussion.
Right, your input. So Lake ushwego, Happy Valley, Milwaukee, Sandy, Malala, and Esseketa have all officially declared that they want, they're interested and indicated a preference for which of the three options they'd want to go for. Lake ushwego, Milwaukee, Sandy, Malala, oh, sorry, Malala and Esseketa, four of the six have gone for the pro-rata share. Happy Valley and Sandy have gone for option A, which is to focus the resources on mitigating the impacts of the business first and then addressing high-fidelity community projects with the remaining funds. And Milwaukee has gone with option B, which is to create a committee with a lot of, with a lot of input, but also a lot of flexibility in how the funds would be allocated. So I wanted to provide that for you. We're meeting with the city cambinator this month. We also have a public hearing with the board of county commissioners on Thursday at ten to get their input as well. I provided the taxing impacts for you. Again, you saw that earlier, I believe, in January. I've also provided a list of the target industries that Clackamas County has identified through an extensive research project called the Economic Landscapes, conducted by S C S Group, with support from F O Northwest. And just pilot for you the ones that would be most eligible for the strategic investment zone program. Wholesale trade, advanced manufacturing in metals, transportation and distribution, advanced technology or high tech, and wood manufacturing, all traded sector industries. And as foundation, we looked at economic output and wages, growth potential, and a number of other factors to determine which were the key industry factors that Clackamas County had a unique competitive advantage for. Also provided a letter or a memo from our county council, since the interrelationship between urban renewal and strategic investment zones has come up with a number of cities. And so he outlines his input on that. Basically, the urban renewal district would get an influx of money faster, be able to build its projects faster, and likely be able to sunset the urban renewal district faster than otherwise. So there's a legal expert opinion there for you to consider. And then finally, Commissioner West asked for a summary of incentives that the state of Oregon and Clackamas County has to offer, so I've provided that for you as well. So today, what we're really hoping for is your input on which of the three options for the community service fee and the income tax revenues you share funds would be dedicated for. So, back to answering questions.
David, you have.
Yeah, I have. I just want to let the council, the commission know that I have been doing it research independent of the county, and Renata, she's provided me a lot of background information on this. I have either talked to or attempted to talk to nearly all of the taxing entities that affect the city, many of which are in the city, which are on this list. Got to kick out of this decision in ten minutes, because that's about how much time the staff put into analyzing it according to them. So, you know, this is not a, there's not a right answer, or should I say a right or wrong answer on this one. I was really hoping that the more I dug into this, the more enthusiastic I would become in being able to recommend something supportive to you. And I just, where I come, I just want to draw some pictures here to prove to Nancy that we can still make use of the old technology.
I appreciate the drawing.
So, I know I always have to remember, Marcus, and essentially, I'm gonna draw two pictures for you. One on this page, and I'll turn it over and draw the other one. And we even have a real-life example that's now moot that we can talk about. So.
You mean Museum of the Oregon Territory?
No. I'll get you. Assuming this line is our revenue stream, that we have a flat line there. And because we're not a savings institution, and we actually spend all the money, or nearly all the money that we take in providing services, this red line represents the service level, the service demand. This green line represents our revenue source. So, in Oregon.
You don't mean service demand. Service demand would be way above the line.
Services provided.
Provided.
So because in Oregon, we have a balanced budget, unlike federal budget would look a lot different, but since we're balanced, our lines go together. So, our current tax structure, assuming everyone is paying, those that are paying were utilizing all that revenue to create, to make these services. So these lines stay fairly consistent. When you do any sort of tax abatement, this one or others, what typically happens is if the abatement is successful enough to attract a new business or a large investment, we see the demand go up, sort of like this. And at the same time, we see the abatement having this effect. And so what we're really doing here is we're designing in structural deficit right here. The difference between the revenue and the service demand. Now, what the question really is, is is that structural deficit that we're designing in, are the traded sector jobs, are the values of those traded sector jobs worth the cost of the abatement?
I wonder why it goes down?
Because your taxes are abated here. Actually, what it would do, it would be more of a flat line.
Right, okay.
And this would be the amount. So, so who makes up that difference? Because we don't prevent people from calling nine-one-one because they work at a traded sector job. We don't prevent them from using our parks, highways, facilities, public safety. So they are going to get those services. And who makes up the difference? Are all the riders that are already on the bus paying taxes? That's all of you, anyone who's in the community paying those taxes. And again, some of the people paying those taxes will be using, getting those jobs and feeding their families. So that is a genuine, what I would call, value-based decision. It's very difficult for me as a manager to tell you, to make a recommendation based on this either way. Because it depends on whether you think, A, is it needed? If you look at Metro's statistics, and I verified this recently with their director, they still are pretty confident in their predictions for growth in the community in this region. And so if you look at that, demands are gonna go up for services anyway. Some new jobs, quite a bit of new jobs are gonna be coming to service that population. So the question would be, do we need to do it? And I think the county and others who are really trying to advance economic development, we're not so much thinking whether we need to. We want to be as competitive as possible, so we're looking at all these tools as viable options for us. So that's really the value decision. For me, I was a little bit surprised because when I called the city manager in Sandy, I found out that Sandy, and you'll notice here on the sheet, they mentioned that at least three of these communities are considered rural. and you'll notice here on their sheet, they mentioned that at least three of these communities are considered rural. And so they have a twenty-five million dollar threshold. And this leads me to my second unsophisticated slide. And recently, we had been teased by a company, so, well, we're not even sure they're a company, but we were entertained by a company from Texas, we thought, who's interested in a thirty million dollar investment on a community creating about three hundred jobs. Now that looks like that may have just been a bit of a tease, but nonetheless, we looked at it seriously, it's time. So let's assume that this line represents Clackamas County, and inside that line are these various cities, some of which are considered rural, and this will be Oregon City. And I think what we saw here is that if the abatement is available to you for only a twenty-five million dollar threshold out here, and it takes a hundred million in here, the incentive is to locate those facilities outside urbanized areas that aren't considered rural. The Sandy city manager was a little bit excited about the proposition, because he said, well, and I couldn't, I was having a hard time understanding why he's so enthusiastic. He said, we're rural. And I said, can we be that? Because to me, this is really the only, this is the only thing I'm concerned about. I think as a matter of public policy, it is concerned. When you look at the velocity behind Oregon land use law, it's a concern. And it's probably the only, the only thing that I just wanted to remind you of. Whether or not you think it's going to be a major impact, we do have that little Beaver Creek area in there, which would be at the twenty-five million, because it's considered rural. So we've tried to soften the blow, if you will, but still, even when I talked to Metro, you know, they said, well, there is an incentive there to locate out of the urbanized core. So it really depends on those two things. This value decision on page one, and then whether you think that this is a big enough snag for you to say no thanks. So that's all I, that's all I really had to say. I'll answer the questions. By the way, also, I reached out to the school district, and I didn't get, I didn't get anything back from them, but they had, they were not aware of it. I do think they got, they got emailed, but they get a lot of emails. I think they got invited to come to a public meeting by the county, but I don't know how involved they got. But they did get more interested after I told them about it. I also got a letter from the fire district, and that's really why I wanted to look into this more. Because when I, when I get a letter from one of our district partners, like the fire district, who seems very heavily, very much enthusiastic as supporter of Oregon City, and they're opposed to something, it makes me sort of step back and take a second look. And so that's what I've done, and I'll answer any questions that you have if I can answer them.
We do have the fire district's letter in our package.
First slide first, your first slide first. You've got that one line, I think I understand what you're saying. But it would seem, and I can, I can understand that certain public services are probably just as critical to whatever creative sector, you know, like, versus the argument residential. I'd be kind of curious, though, I mean, our greatest, I presume our greatest expenditure out of our general fund is to employees. Whether, whether the police demand actually in a creative sector area would be as great as the residential and residential.
Probably wouldn't be, but there would be, presumably, these are family wage jobs, and so we're going to have new families who use our library services. That abatement affects all of those districts, library, anybody who collects anything from them.
The other thing about the revenues, it's not flat, because the first, if it's a rural area, if it's twenty-five million, we get that.
On the first twenty-five million, they pay on that first twenty-five million. So that line would actually be slightly, tracking the other one all small. So that would be smaller.
The area we're talking about is rural, because it's not an annex. So how do you tie a development in an area that is not annexed or jurisdiction, and then have the ability to annex it? It decides it doesn't want to be annexed.
Good question.
I think that that's all a matter of timing. It's actually not tied to annexation, it's tied to when it was brought into the urban growth boundary. So that rural designation was set based on the two thousand two urban, uh, urban growth boundary. So, you know, it's rural, we set up the district now, and it was rural, and then we were able to annex it before a company came along. Then we'd still be able to.
We, if you set up this thing now, we could annex it.
Right, it's based on the two thousand two UGB.
I think I indicated before that is the area of greatest interest. Maybe that's the area that.
Part of the problem, part of the problem with that area, you know, we have not only the acres in Beaver Creek, but we have some industrial lands on the other side of Beaver Creek. And it's getting that initial investment, the initial business to start a cluster, that's difficult. And, you know, once you get the initial business, the others are more likely to follow.
We first had this discussion with Renata and her contingent. Dan, I believe, just kind of had a knee-deep reaction, he said, well, shouldn't those numbers be reversed? And of course, if they were, I wouldn't have any concerns. And I guess in the ideal sense, I would like to just see them equal, so there isn't a different threshold. When the juice company, as we call it, was thinking about locating here, I thought, gosh, I hope they don't hear about this and take a step over the city limit boundary and ask for an abatement on five million over their thirty. It didn't happen, so it's, but, you know, those could happen, those are real world scenarios. But there may have been some legislative, I can't imagine that this kind of debate didn't happen at the state legislature, and I didn't have time to look at all the legislative history and find out what was, what were they thinking when they had the twenty-five hundred million breakdown and how that number came about. There probably was quite a bit of pressure at the state level for rural communities who just have a hard time competing with anyone. And my guess is that's really what drove that.
A twenty-five million dollar investment in a rural community is a significant investment.
Oh, huge, it's either major employer, right? Yeah, and I think the other flaw, probably in this picture here, is that over time, when the, when the abatement ends, that's a huge influx in the state community.
Well, actually, after fifteen years, but anytime they make an improvement of that, of the threshold amount, they can get a new abatement, even on the same site. So it's for equipment and reinvestment, things like that. So it's hard, it's very hard to predict the diagram beyond being.
It's hard to predict, but that is an impossible scenario. And I suppose, again, the, you know, all the development that we have been talking about, there's always development around it. So, which always concerns me out in the rural areas as well. And then how do we provide the transportation? But, again, we have that issue of a development around us that all has to go through us without any additional transportation funding.
I'm confused by what you said. You said you get twenty-five million dollar abatement.
It's an abatement on investments over twenty-five million.
It would have to be an additional twenty-five million dollar investment.
But does that one affect the twenty-five million already?
They pay full levy of taxes to all the entities up to twenty-five million.
So that's after fifteen years.
Yeah, I understand it, but then you said, you mean, your question either did.
Did they make another investment?
But that doesn't apply what they already got.
It would be seen as a completely separate application.
Do you have any other comments on David's artwork?
The correction of the site in, well, quite a fairly substantial increase on the hundred million dollar investment for the twenty-five million. I mean, you are getting those taxes, which is a significant infusion to the city and to the taxing districts.
The other thing is, just to remind everyone, that even on the first twenty-five, for example, there's this community service fee, which is twenty-five percent. And there's the personal income tax money that's generated from the employees. All that can go back to the taxing districts. And one of the options that Renata was talking about, which seems to be the most popular, is that it's simply pro-rata. So if your tax rate is, you know, if your tax rate is one quarter of the total tax, that's what you're going to get back.
I think the question for me is, you know, will they come anyway? And if they would come anyway, then maybe not be important. And then the other way of looking at it is also, like we look at urban renewal. Without the investment, it is zero flat. So an additional twenty-five million, or whatever million is kind of what everything now. So that's sort of how we look at that.
And Mayor, I did reach out to some of the other cities, Westland and Wilsonville and some of these others, and interesting their analysis. I don't think that Westland was actually invited to be in the, in the, I'm not sure about the other one, but we talked about the concepts in general. I just had a meeting with several of the city managers, and, you know, many of their councils simply decided, you know, we've got brisk growth as it is, we're having a hard time keeping up with some of that. We're catching up our comp plans now that the recession's set, and we just don't think we need to do it. So it's, that's that page one, no right answer, kind of. It depends on your community and what you look into your city commission crystal ball and see what you think.
To address the question of Westland, Gladstone, and.
Wilsonville.
Wilsonville city council decided that they have a very strategic location on I-5, and they have a lot of industrial land and buildings, and they felt they really didn't need the incentive. In Westland and Gladstone, they really don't have any appreciable industrial land that would be vacant served and ready to accommodate a large investment like that. So this pool doesn't make sense for them. Demaskism included, because they just aren't there yet. They may be in a while, but not now. And they would have the option to join us later if they'd like.
Rocky?
What's the next step in hearing from the school board, or, I mean, the school district and our police department?
Our police department didn't express any, Mike didn't have any opinion, one way or the other. The school district, I invited them to let me know if they had an objection. I locked, I talked to Ted about two weeks ago, I think it was, and he had just started.
They've all been discussing on other things, like the end of the school year. But I have a feeling that they probably would want to weigh in on this. And I, I can't imagine supporting it without the school district supporting it. It's clear, you know, I'm not surprised by the fire department's comments. I'm not excited about this at all.
Renata might want to talk a little bit about the county's having a public hearing this Thursday.
Much like your process, yeah.
The county's, it's required as part of forming a strategic investment zone that there be a public hearing. It was not required to have meetings with taxing districts, we hadn't done anyway. We had one in April eighth for the rural districts, and one on April thirteenth for the urban districts. And we sent out invitations to a hundred of the, all of the affected taxing districts, a hundred letters that went out. At the rural taxing district meeting, the school district for Sandy and for Malala came, and they were concerned about revenue impacts. In general, they would love to see more businesses in their communities. So they weren't upset about trying to attract those kinds of businesses. But they did prefer the pro-rata share, because they felt it would help their financial situation. The fire district came to the Malala public hearing and was supportive, but was also concerned about revenue impacts and preferred the pro-rata share. So that is a consistent theme that we've heard from all of our taxing districts, that they prefer the pro-rata share approach among the various community service fee options. At the urban taxing district meeting, only the fire district came. There was a representative from the county urban renewal district, the city of Lake us we go, and the city of Happy Valley. The fire district was the only district that had a concern. And they are philosophically opposed to incentives, they don't feel they're needed. This is fire district one, Powell Gorman in particular.
It reflected in the letter.
Right, and so, um, smart people can disagree regarding incentives. It's very much a local decision.
I'd be really interested in the school district, I would not look at it quite as a thing, because they only serve, merely serve the creative sector only in the sense that the employees might actually work. They're not, they're not providing direct services to the area per se.
I'm interested in that too, and I'm also, I was trying to think both positively and negatively about the issues. So if we did not participate, you know, a business might go somewhere else. They might go somewhere else anyway. I'm not sure, but that's very easy to logically connect, connect those dots. We do have a lot of vacant land now in our urban growth boundary. And we can draw the zone to not include the whole city, right?
You could choose to just have the rural.
Right, so I'm, I'm wanting to hear all the answers to the other questions too, but I'm probably more interested in that, you know, drawing the line for our rural piece, our asset plan area, have an urban growth boundary area. So are you interested in pursuing the conversation?
I am, specifically the Beaver Creek area.
I am, I am too. We're interested in pursuing that conversation.
Not especially, but I don't mind listening to the answers that come back from our other, from the school district, et cetera.
I don't mind the discussion, I think I'm still quite skeptical about this.
Because like we all are a little bit. Okay, we'll pursue the discussion and see what the school district says.
Let me just say, I'm not sure, I'm not sure that I'm gonna, I'm not necessarily anticipating that I'll hear back from the school district. But of you that have, that have contacts with the school, or perhaps even know some of the board members, you may want to speak to them and see how they are feeling about it, if they've been approached or just had any discussions about it. In the meantime, I will reach out to the district superintendent's office again and ask them if they can send us something that I can share with you. But that was sort of the message I left with them, a couple weeks ago, and I just haven't heard back yet.
Okay, thank you for the presentation. Appreciate that. Next, thank you for your patience, CIC. Go chairs. We are next on the agenda to hear an update from CIC. Now, why is this update here rather than at the city council? Normally, our reports from our advisory committees, which this is. Okay, that's why, it's more of a discussion than a report.
Okay.
So Mayor, I'm going to introduce our guests this evening. We have representatives from the city, the city's citizen investment. I'm going to say CIC, I'm all, I'm tired tonight. We have Eddie Maum, and William Gifford, and Tom Guile, and I met these folks a couple of different times as board members, and then I was a guest at their CIC meeting last night. And I've also, as you know, met myself and every association. So I really feel like this is helping me, at least, a great deal, get familiar with the community and interesting people that live here, and I've learned a lot so far, and I look forward to many more of those as well. So with that, I'll turn it over to our guests.
And you are officers, so we're here for leadership here.
I'm Guile, the chair.
Eddie Maum, vice chair.
We have the secretary.
We're well into our second year of reorganized citizen involvement committee, or council. And as we've gotten into this, we have a few questions we wanted to bring to you and some thoughts, to see what your input might be. And so to just refresh your memory right now, our mission statement, as you may well be aware, is we will provide an active and systematic process for community and public agency involvement in the land use process and consider and act upon a broad range of issues affecting the livability and quality of our neighborhoods. I was doing some research online, and according to the work plan goals and priorities for two thousand, it's on our website, the city website, there's nothing more current than that. So from over a decade ago, the purpose of the CIC was to provide a framework for facilitating open two-way communications between city representatives and individual groups in the community. We still believe that those are active and relevant today. And for a time, the CIC was deactivated, but now it's been fully reactivated, and we are actively, a lot of actively there. We are actively engaged with unity and communication between the city and our neighborhoods. Our CIC board members come from the numerous neighborhood associations across our city. And in the past year and a half, officers and members of the. And in the past year and a half, um, officers and members of the C I C have actively worked to reactivate some of those inactive neighborhoods that weren't actually participating, but we wanted to get those citizens' voices heard. So as, as we move forward with our organization, we'd like to make some inquiries of the city in order for us to adequately and fairly represent the citizens that comprise those neighborhoods. So some thoughts have come up where we could use some direction. Number one, we would like to require the following of our neighborhood associations. In order for all neighborhood associations to be duly recognized as operational and representative of their constituency. And we've got five points. Betty's gonna take the first two.
So the first two are having the neighborhood meetings be notified, um, in advance. So that if a member of the C I C or staff may be interested to attend the meetings, then, um, they would know when they were. So far, we still have a few neighborhoods that are not doing that. Um, and then we've also asked, and it's part of our bylaws for the C I C, that all neighborhoods, um, present their minutes, attendance sheets and copies of their newsletters, um, to the C I C liaison person. And that is, some are not doing that still. So we're kinda, Williams, Tom's going next.
Those are for proper recording of what is happening within the neighborhood association meetings. Uh, one of the other ones would require that neighborhood chairs, the chairs, not just representative. Currently, we have two representatives from each neighborhood, but we think it would be useful that neighborhood chair attend a C I C meeting at least quarterly to know what's going on and so we can meet and, and talk with them. It would be great to have their presence.
Assuming they bring presence. Um. This is a funny thing because it's not a huge problem right now, but we wanna make sure that it doesn't become a problem. Uh, we wanted to include somewhere in the C I C bylaws that neighborhood association representatives should come from two separate households to ensure fair and open distribution of responsibility for neighborhood business concerns. Um, it just seems as though that they're both coming from the same household, which you're really only getting one opinion. All seriousness aside. Uh, and the last item that we had on this list was to request that the neighborhood associations limit, uh, the joint meetings of their neighborhood associations to ensure fair and open discussions of issues particularly relevant to their unique neighborhoods. Joint meetings, of course, are occasionally useful for short-term common issues. And the examples that I would give are, um, McLaughlin Association and Park Place is going to be having a joint meeting regarding the Jug Handle Project. Uh, the, uh, Bartha Hills Association and the Hill and Dale Association is at a joint meeting on the presentation of the architects for the Safeway project, which is on their borders. So things like that seems like it's worthwhile, but we also feel that neighborhoods have, uh, neighborhoods are divided because they have unique issues. That, you know, that what's important to one neighborhood may not resonate with another neighborhood. And we understand that there are, uh, sometimes reasons for convenience sake to have neighborhoods jointly meet. If there was a, a guest speaker, perhaps to conserve, uh, city staff time or, uh, city commissioner time if they were coming to make a presentation. But for the most part, we think that we ought to encourage, um, individual neighborhood associations. And if neighborhood associations don't feel that they should be meeting separately, then maybe we ought to realign the boundaries and make them a new neighborhood association is, is one entity rather than having two chairs and, you know, and two boards. If it's the same neighborhood, then call it state a state and say it's one neighborhood. Yeah, and so, uh, so that's something that, um.
So what we're wondering on this point one is what kind of influence do we as the C I C, uh, leaders have to, uh, make these changes? Uh, do we have the authority to say this is what we want, want to make sure happens? Because it's fair to all the neighborhoods to require you to submit your minutes and attendance and the things that we've been discussing this evening? Is that given, that direction given to us by the city council, uh, say, go ahead, that sounds reasonable, or how do we approach these?
I think that's an interesting question. Um, um, the authority that you have likely is from your members. And so it's because you're essentially a representative organization. It is because you have members coming from each of the organizations. So I assume that if you were granted the, um, if your members vote to initiate these, that that's your authority.
The second part of that question would be, because this was deactivated for a while, we're back being strong and having our, our monthly meetings. Is if, if we go to them with ease and say, this is what we'd like to see happen, and some neighborhoods say, no, uh, we don't wish to follow those kind of rules and we don't need to submit minutes, then what do we do? That's the authority we're wondering. Do we say, if you wanna be recognized as a neighborhood association, you need to follow what all the other associations are doing? Or, or what? That's what we wanted to ask.
Here's a sticky record.
One of the things that we considered is, uh, the money issue. That the, this, the neighborhood associations exist really at the pleasure of the city council. And they have been designated as, as, um, um, de facto advisory councils, uh, in and of themselves. To support that, the city has budgeted money to, uh, to support their communications. I mean, another issue we're gonna talk about, but, uh, I would hate to use that as a, as a, as a stick saying if you don't, you don't play right, uh, you don't get any money.
Money does talk though.
Well, I agree, I mean, C I C was kind of bottom up thinking of the creation of C I C before, and now your question is gonna be some of the top down piece. Um, I guess if the neighborhood association doesn't associate itself more with the C I C, they have a weaker voice. Uh, I mean, someone bringing it forward as an individual neighborhood association probably doesn't have as much of an impact compared to they're coming forward with the blessing of the umbrella organization as well. So it'll probably not be in their interest to do so, but whether you wanna maybe that they, as part of their existence, that they become a functional member of the C I C, um, I think it's their best interest to do so.
That may be true.
Maybe that's a mechanism.
That may be true, Doug, but then how about those individuals who do abide by the rules and the bylaws of the C I C and say, well, then if the other ones aren't going to give us, give the minutes and attendance, why should we? Uh, and then you, everything falls apart. Not that we're trying to do it top-down, but if all the other members vote and say, yes, these seem logical to us. So we know what's happening, uh, and if you say it doesn't apply to us, then sooner or later, there's gonna be some breakdown of, well, if they don't, we don't need to.
Which is essentially sort of what happened, um, previously a little bit, and of course the city didn't, we disinvested in them and that really caused a huge breakdown, Doug, of course I'm.
I do this friendly, by the way.
Yeah, no, 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 no.
This is why we're having a dialogue with you guys.
Yeah, no, but, um, on one hand, um, if you're going to have a strategy for inclusion, there ought to be a price for membership. And if it's supposed to be a two-way communication, the two-way communication really should happen in an entity like your representative body. And, um, and if those, and if groups choose not to comply, um, you know, we really ought to think about, um, perhaps a, a way to compel the, compel the attendance because then communication breaks down further.
Encourage perhaps.
No, I, I prefer incentives rather than incentives as well. Jim?
The first question I had of all these points that you presented to us tonight, who developed them? Were they developed within the body of the C I C, discussed and approved by the C I C?
Yes, well, no, the minutes, the, the minutes that need to be sent, the minutes that need to be sent. All of those things have then talked to the C I C people, having proper notice.
Did they vote to approve?
Well, they voted to approve the bylaws.
They, and they're in the bylaws. And the by, bylaws were voted on and approved.
Which of those points were not discussed within the C I C membership?
Would be, um.
The last three, we require, the requiring that, that the, that neighborhood chair attend a quarterly meeting so that they can keep in touch with us and, and we can know who they are and, and have some good communication. Um, the fact that the people from two separate households and also, um, limit the joint meetings where it's every month, all the meetings are together when they have them rather than. I think these were a compilation of us getting together, brainstorming, knowing what's been going on. And we'll talk about these with, with the group. I'm sure that most of them will probably say that that's proper and they agree with it. We were wondering if, if some decide to just ignore us, what kind of, uh, authority do we have as the lead of that organ, of the C I C to ask them to?
Yeah, I, I, I've gotta, I gotta be very straightforward with you all. I am very uncomfortable acting as, as royalty and putting excalibur on the forehead of the leadership of the C I C to give you power. That makes me very uncomfortable. If you're gonna have authority and power, it's still gotta come from the bottom up.
If we ask the, the membership that is present at a meeting, do you agree with this? And everyone that's there agrees or it's majority, that's what we're saying. If the majority agree that, yes, these things should happen, then, then, then what do we do? If the rest of them say, include these in the bylaws, they make sense? Then we're not asking for, for a scepter to do anything. We're asking, then do we have some right as the C I C itself? The membership to say these other ones are not following what the other ones are.
But doesn't, doesn't that question itself get solved by bylaws?
And if somebody doesn't care to follow the bylaws?
Because miss, what if they don't follow the?
They're already, it's already, uh, part of this is already in the bylaws. They've been voted on, they've been approved. Neighborhoods are not fulfilling the bylaws to the C I C. So what's the recourse?
Yeah, but I don't see where the city, I don't see where the city commission comes in it.
Well, it's for dialogue, it's for passing points, it's for information.
Let's put it this way, everything you do, everything we're doing tonight is open for public review. If the neighborhood association is having meeting, meetings and there's no minutes to say what's being discussed, so it's public and open, then we, we as the C I C don't know and neither does the city commission and this is supposed to be a secret history.
Then would that be considered a secret meeting?
Especially if they're, if you said that their meetings that are being held that don't provide notice.
Correct.
Not really, because, it's me, because that's.
Going for everybody to be transparent, you know?
Same place, so to speak.
All on the same thing.
Not trying to constrain anybody as much, maybe so we all know what everyone's doing fairly.
The two-way communication always was, I mean, before when it worked well, you know, in the nineties. Um, the, the two-way communication really was pretty good. I, I went to learn what was going on in my city as well as for us to get input back and forth. It was a, I wanna see that.
I think that, uh, you had used a good, a good word there, Allison, you talked about, uh, the city had, uh, divested itself of the, you know, of the C I C. And, you know, for whatever the reasons were, have abandoned the city. And now, um, I guess what we're looking for is a reinvestment and sort of a, um, uh, vote of confidence, a little show of support. And, and I think that we are getting that at many levels and we appreciate that, the C I C appreciates that. And I think that the associations certainly appreciate what we're doing. Um, we just, we just wanna make sure that, uh, any issues that we have are aired and transparent.
Just adding onto that, uh, for Jim and for anybody else who might be, and thinking about this. These were just some things that have come up and we've noticed over time. And we intend to, we just wanted to come to you first, but we intend to bring them up as probably the next C I C as part of our agenda. Uh, these are some issues that, that all of you have raised your mission at times, being the C I C representatives. What would you feel about us, um, more enforcing these rules of our own bylaws that you all voted on? A, a little, uh, more aggressively and making sure that all the information is on file of, of minutes and things like that. It would all be coming from them, not from us. We're not the dictators telling them, but asking them at the next meeting, here's some issues. What do you think and how should we approach it?
I don't think they're considering that you're insisting on the representative being the chair. I can understand why you want a vishwally representation. I'll just give you an example. I served as representative to the metro policy advisory committee for nearly six years under three mayors. I, I felt I represented the commission, whatever it was, and then brought back what was going back to the commission. I, and maybe simply the chair, you guys are being scheduled at the time of the chair, the chair because of other reasons could not make it anyway. Uh, I think what would be important is whoever is designated as the representative is designated by the neighborhood association, uh, as opposed necessarily being the chair of the neighborhood association.
Or selected by the chair.
Well, I mean, that is a little neighborhood association. I think, you know, they may well do bylaws individually differently, but in, in any case, either, either elected by the chair or, or, or by the, uh, formerly in neighborhood association meeting. Uh, I, I don't, I don't know necessarily, uh, uh, the chair may be chair there for other reasons. You might have an individual there that would better represent the neighborhood association.
Would be more comfortable if it was a request put out to them, not a requirement, but a request that we would. Almost like a retreat, we would like to meet with all the, the chairs in the neighborhood associations to discuss common goals and thoughts.
I think that's very, very fair. I mean, again, there's status communication, you've gotta have the leaders invested in, in the organization. Um, I think the other, um, issue, because we, we hold the purse strings and we, we demand accountability in all areas of our, of our budget. Um, I guess why would it still the ball back to you and have your, uh, if you have it already, C I C discuss what happens if a neighborhood doesn't comply with the bylaws? Um, you know, what, what kind of remediation do you do? Do you have to send a, a team to help them? Um, I mean, sometimes it's just a little education thing. Sometimes it's, you know, you just have to have a little back and forth about why it's not occurring or whatever. What are mechanisms to make it work better for you? But may, maybe it's, so, so what do you do? And, uh, because maybe it's more than one thing, um, and after that first visit, then, you know, you don't get money for your newsletter or something. But, but, but I think that I would like to think of it as accountability. And of course, uh, your bylaws are, are pretty strict, you have to be able to have that communication. You gotta have people there.
Yes.
So attendance and, and all that quality of representation. Did you speak off of? Okay, so Jim.
Wanting to return to the bylaws question, one of the points you raised was, um, should neighborhoods associations hold joint meetings? Um, is that some, is that question addressed in the bylaws?
No. The last three are.
Occasionally, this means every time the meetings are joined together.
Right, okay. So you're bringing that question to us on the initiative of the, the leadership, not, that question was not discussed within. Okay, so that's an example to me of a question that what, what authority does this commission have to bestow upon either the C I C or the leadership of the C I C to make a determination on that question? To me, all, that, that's something that, that shouldn't even be raised before the city commission.
It wouldn't exist.
The city has set the boundaries.
Okay, your city.
The city has set the neighborhood boundaries. And I assume the G I S gave us, is where the boundaries of the neighborhood association are. But in setting those boundaries, the city does not in any way dictate whether neighborhood associations can choose to hold joint meetings or not. I mean, I, I feel uncomfortable, I, I feel, I mean, it's, I don't. I'm, I, I'm not meaning to be confrontational about this, I'm just very.
Concerned, okay.
Yeah. But I, I, I feel like I'm being asked, um, to dictate. Uh, or, or that we're, I, I feel like we are being asked to dictate whether or not.
I think it was misunderstood.
Yeah, that we are being asked to dictate whether neighborhood associations can hold joint meetings or not.
Not at all. What we came to ask about is if we as a group decide that these are the things that we, they would like to see happen, what if? What we came to ask about is if we as a group decide that these are the things that we they would like to see happen, what authority does the neighborhood association itself and its leadership have to um
Encourage.
Encourage the other neighborhood associations to say you need to follow the same rules as the other ones? Yet they themselves make these decisions and we have have helped them and are leading them, what authority do we have to say you need to be a part of this? That's what we came to ask.
And I I think the discussion is excellent, I'm really liking the um the where where we're going with it, but I I think, but as in the beginning, I I think the authority is given to you.
Okay.
If it's given to you by those who are in your body, then you have a.
And I hope you're seeing why we didn't bring this up at a at a city council session.
I do, I'm sorry, I I I thought it said it before, so.
So we have a set.
That's good, yes.
Um, during the reactivation of the C I C, uh, the city manager at the time, Larry, had stated that he was assigning us a half-time liaison with the city. And as things have progressed now, we're in the about a year down the road here of this, we would like a clarification of the duties and responsibilities of Chris Taylor to our organization. Um, she was taking a minute for a while and then I guess about a month ago decided that she wouldn't be doing that anymore, but she's been more representative, I believe, from the police department. And we're wondering, is there a job description for her serving in that capacity or has that um changed at all in the last year?
That's.
We don't know what the role is.
You know, I don't think that we do either, so possibly we have to talk with staff about that.
One of the failures of the for my interpretation, because I was on the C I C originally formed, um, was that and that when the person was telling wasn't that fact, elevated eventually to a manager position, but I don't think really participated in management meetings. And I think it'd be a real benefit, uh, whoever the the person might be, whatever, wherever they come from.
Talking about the liaison?
I'm talking about the staff person to say, naturally, be whether it's a manager, one manager position that where they're able to send management beings uh uh so that views of the of the of the C I C, neighborhood associations can actually be brought into conversations that occur there.
And I I can tell you what we've been doing since I got here in six weeks, I've learned a lot about that history, but please continue when you're done. I'm trying to tell you where we're at right now.
Go ahead, there, okay.
I think this I think this topic may need to be excised and talked about um in a, as I said.
Yeah, it's it's a, I guess I was hoping to have a have some opportunities over the next year to work with these folks and kind of de- develop some service expectations and get more familiar with what the community's demands are and how this is all gonna work. Cause I I'm a big supporter of this kind of structure and I think it can be a benefit to both the associations, all of our residents, and for our city governance process. Chris Taylor is doing is is performing those services right now without any compensation. She volunteered to do it, so she's going there doing it as volunteer. She's got a a pretty full-time.
We were told it was a half-time thing.
Yes.
I'm gonna apply for it.
I'm just telling you what her boss told me since I got here, every day, practically. Now, she doesn't want, she doesn't ask for compensation either, by the way, so that's what I understand.
To the commission.
I.
Well. This is something he's only been here for
Yeah, I don't.
Six weeks, so he's gonna figure it out.
So I don't know where the funding is or what what the funding situation is. I can tell you, though, usually employers, when the employee volunteers to do something, they usually say, okay, until the employee says, I I wanna be paid. And that that actually hasn't happened, but I've been talking to the chief more about that and I think um we should insist on some sort of remuneration for for that. So um we're gonna be having those discussions too more and more. There are, um, so I wanna Doug, get into more of your point about whether there should be some sort of representative face there from city administration. It's very difficult for me to envision Chris Taylor knowing the things, all the things, and covering all the different services that we provide and just the parameters of questions that I've seen at the Tuesday. Both the C I C and the neighborhood meeting that I went to and I thought, you know, I could have half my staff here and we might have to go back to the drawing board and come to answers. And the great questions are just too much going on for any one person, even the city manager, unless maybe you've been here after five years, some of this stuff I'm gonna just have in there. But, you know, it's it takes, it's not a one-person kind of response. And so what I what I thought about doing that I think might work better, at least on a short-term basis, is whomever is there sort of as the facilitator is for my staff and I to be more active in attending those meetings when we do have information that's gonna be helpful to the discussion. So that we actually have a more direct source of that same kind of information that I think Mr. Neely was, that's what you were alluding at, is how to get the information. I'm I'm looking more at how how do we get the service to them, not not whether it gets there or who does it? More how do we how do we most effectively, most efficiently do this?
Last night, both David was there and Nancy Kaden was there and it was great.
Yeah, it was, yeah.
Yes. And then, um, another, uh, as you guys, as you talk about moving forward, uh, and I think the mayor, all these, this discussion has been fantastic. There's two issues that the city, uh, there are some potential legal concerns with. One would be the budget and the use of it, and I've gone over this with some of the board members. Uh, that that budget, those funds can only really be used for public purposes, so to the extent that a particular member or a group of people, uh, how should I say that representing themselves as members in some city sanctioned body were using funds for anything other than those purposes such as personal reasons or political purposes, any of that stuff, you gotta be real careful about using public funds for anything other than those public purposes. So that's that's one of the restrictions that I'm gonna have the city attorney start looking into that so that, that was one of the questions that came up last night, in fact. And so I I talked to him today. The other question that came up was open records law and whether it applies and it's likely that it does. Uh, to what extent are the notice requirements and all of that? So we're trying to put together a letter, that was one of the requests I got, was can you give us a letter from the city attorney telling us what we have to do and how? Of course, there's a whole big giant website and a handbook on this, but I'm, I think they're after the condensed version, so Bill's working on a memo for them for that.
You meant open meetings law.
Open meetings law, isn't that what it says?
It's an open record.
Okay, open meetings law. And um then, as as you move forward, maybe after this discussion tonight, when you're able to kind of get back together and condense what it is, you some of the questions that you have, I think it would be really helpful if you could get those to us in writing. I did get an email this morning from one of your members who pledged last night that he would send me an email and he did that right off the bat, so I'm already working on that. That's where the request for the open meetings memo came. Um, but these other questions that you posed tonight, I think are really excellent and I wanna make sure that we're responsive and try to get both information for you folks and also for the commission and to the extent that you might or might not wanna make a decision on this. What is what is the extent of your authority, for example, to to require certain things and to make certain things happen? People can always peacefully assemble and do whatever they want independent of of these groups and they may decide that they're gonna do that anyway and not be part of that, that's that's their privilege.
But we don't have to pay them to.
That's right, that's right. Actually, we couldn't, so.
I'm glad we're having this discussion as well because the looks on some of these faces when they didn't realize that she wasn't a paid physician is.
It's all she was.
I'd like you to, when you're going through things, to look at a memo from September sixteen to two thousand eight from Larry Patterson. Um, it's talking about the the C I C and increasing communications with citizens. They put this on here, secondly, the city commission must make some hard decisions and they will need your support. Um, this was to the C I C study committee. Reactivating the C I C is not a new program, the city has never done away with the C I C, but without the city staff support, its energy and direction has faltered. Adding a P I O slash C I C liaison position is reestablishing a position a position cut in two thousand five. And that's where I believe they looked at is they assessed the finances of where the money would come from. Pardon? September sixteenth, two thousand eight, from Larry Patterson, his time, uh, proposal for reactivation of the C I C. Pardon?
Hey, we can forward him a copy of that.
I don't have the original.
I have the original, I can forward it to you.
Again, I'm glad, we didn't expect an answer tonight, but we wanted to approach the subject of what were her roles and duties, that she was a paid liaison by the city, so thank you for looking into that.
Um, one caveat, too, that she, I'm not sure what what was in that letter, but I would certainly take a look at it. Uh, when I say she's there on her own time, she's there, as I understand it, after hours on her own time, but I also think she does do coordination activities during the day uh, on her regular work schedule, so electronic things, things like that.
The agenda and stuff.
So when I say she's there as a volunteer, she's there during meals times as a volunteer, but that doesn't mean she's not getting a portion of her salary from that budget line because she is doing some of that work on.
Understand, we're not dissatisfied with anything that she's done, she's great to be there, we were just wondering where what the role was, but thank you.
I don't wanna take advantage of her volunteers anymore to to to.
And a lot of people do contact Chris when they wanna get on the agenda, they don't necessarily contact one of us, they contact her because they kind of know that she is the liaison, we'd like to speak before the C I C, so and I'm sure she does that during the day when the business is.
During him for us.
Yes.
Well, that and that may be, um, you know, policies, policy is one thing, like bylaws, but procedures are another. And so that may be something that you want to discuss within your group, what procedures do follow to get, you know, the agenda and and I don't think we have that in the bylaw.
No.
But I think the chair is supposed to set the agenda, but it's been so busy with so many people wanting to speak to us recently, haven't had much trouble studying in the agenda. The third item we wanted to discuss is that under Damon's leadership, we were looking into um improving the, it was my role in with communications as the vice chair to look into improving the newsletters. Some newsletters that go out are simply a flyer to be devoted when the when their neighborhood meeting is about to happen. Other ones like Park Place or maybe Southern are have a lot more stories of what's going on in their communities and it is newsworthy. We started, I started looking into uh local areas where we could combine them all into one newsletter that would be sent out maybe two times, every two months, excuse me, to all the neighborhoods so they know what was going on in another neighborhood as well. And maybe each one of them would have a page in that, it could reduce our costs and uh get the word out about other special events that were happening across the city. The city would have a page, it would, it's similar to Trail View News, but this would be more neighborhood related. Uh, we were auditing, we had asked Chris to get us the budget and what's been spent by each neighborhood because some are horrific, they put it out uh, one every month where some only do it maybe three times a year and we wanted to see how the money was being spent. We were kind of surprised and I believe um um William and Betty have already talked to David about this, but we discovered that the Trail View Newsletter was included. Trail News, excuse me, Trail View.
That's where you live.
Who? So we were, um, we always have believed that the money was earmarked for the neighborhood association newsletters. And this kind of puts a crimp in our budget, which means that some neighborhood associations are cutting back or uh, I know in Park Place about a year ago, I remember Laura saying there was no money for us to do newsletters and so we didn't put anything out and our attendance at our meetings dropped to five people. Um, and uh, so we were, we've asked David to look into that and the trail is part of that and uh, because we would like to move, we've asked each of the neighborhoods to give us a sample of their heading of some news in their neighborhood and we could probably put something together that would reduce the cost, but also get the word out to all neighbors across Oregon City.
How do we do with that communications? You're using electronic too?
Yeah.
Some some neighborhoods do.
Some more than others, yeah.
The electronic guru.
Yeah.
Facebook and Twitter and.
There's a lot of people that don't have computers and I know.
The non, no.
Having been the managing editor of the Lions statewide newspaper, I know gathering segments of information from across the state and putting them into one format, and that's what we were hoping to do with the with the um standardized format from all the neighborhoods and getting news out there rather than just an announcement of a date to spend the amount of money it costs to send a flyer out for having a meeting isn't really the news and it's kind of a.
And understanding that that's a two-edged sword as well, but having a consolidated um uh uber newsletter might lose some of the uniqueness of a neighborhood where they're not gonna be able to necessarily see their own personal fingerprints all over it. But I think that uh there could be some compromises made that we could find a cost a cost-effective way of involving the whole city and still maintain the individuality of each association.
Yeah, you know, to put a banner on the top of each one, like Park Place has the covered wagon and the inventory, each one has their own banner and so we'd ask each one would have their own with their own heading on to it. And again, it's just a concept, it's taken a year and a half and it still hasn't taken off, but it's when we started looking at the budget, we noticed how sometimes that there was a lot of money going in different directions. Plus, we noticed that a lot of different printers were used and we thought we might ask the city if they have a contract with somebody, maybe we can get a reduced cost by using one printer instead of several.
We dealt with that.
On the list that I got from Chris.
Ah, cause he he just got that probably two years ago.
I'm not sure if I have it here with me, but there's several different.
By having a one one source, because you would get better deals.
Right.
I think it, Chris showed one that had four different.
Four different printers?
Yes, I know, we discussed that once, but obviously we didn't come to a conclusion. Doug.
I had a couple of things, one, oh, three now. Actually, I don't think the commission was aware that that line item was used for the current news and so we, you, while you pointed out a one of our, one of our meetings, it was a broad, uh, that was during one of our budget meetings, well, no, this was last budget.
I knew it before.
No, you said you did at the top. That's all I thought.
Okay.
That was a shit. Yeah, it seems like, but anyway, um, the boundaries were, we, at least some of the neighborhood associations, the one C I C, Larry, Paul was here. It never came before the commission, those boundaries were never.
Oh, okay.
So that's something I think that has to come before us.
Oh.
The other thing.
For example, the uh the. Divisor being incorporated in McLachlan, for example?
Yes, yes.
He has some other concerns about, for example, a a boundary between a neighborhood association, if it's on a street, on, you have a street that's.
One side.
Yeah, it's on one side and the other side, you look at Warner Milney and Warner Milney on this side is Hillendale and Warner Milney on this side is Barkley Hills. Oh, that doesn't make sense, it would be on like a property lines instead of on uh.
Just have to negotiate the equivalent of Mason Dixon line.
Yeah.
Anyway. You 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 brought you brought forward the the joint, the joint meetings and I know at least two neighborhood associations, I think, would always meet joint. And you suggested maybe combining boundaries, I think it's something that really needs to be negotiated. The area is a real larger, it's an area.
Well, Hillendale and Gaffney Gaffney Lane were initially set up as separate associations, then they're because of lack of participation. Uh, they became one and now they split apart again.
Yeah.
Any other issues now?
My 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 statement is where where that exists and if that's something that needs to be discussed among you all, I I sure won't put the commission to pull down. Yeah.
We all have different opinions of that too right now, at Park Place, we have so few people attending that I'd be glad to combine with anybody. We didn't even have enough people in the last one, the last one needed to have hold elections.
Well, I think, um.
You just need to do something for them, they'll never bring everybody you got.
We need to, we need to move along and this is a piece of an ongoing discussion, so we appreciate you bringing those issues in. Um, I I obviously you'll have robust discussions at your meetings and.
We thank you for giving us the time tonight and for looking into all this, it's great to have me for you with some.
We'll make forward progress to it.
Yeah.
Yes.
Before before we just give away, can I confirm that you're gonna get me sort of your written request in so that I can have the city attorney look at some of those items and get back to you? We won't take that out of your trail news or out of the C I C budget, I can assure you, we'll take it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, I think the next one I can handle fairly quickly, unless you have a lot of questions. This is um the Declaration of Cooperation of Long Island Heritage Area Coalition. As you know, um, I co-chair that with um, Suri Carson from Westland. Um, this is a broad coalition of multiple groups, about twenty-two of them, I think. Um, as we move toward the feasibility of a national heritage area, we are um looking at this. Um as we move toward the feasibility of a national heritage area, we are um looking at this model we used by Oregon Solutions as we looked at the loss. Um as a, just kind of a way of making sure that the bodies that we represent are wrong for the right. And so um the declaration of cooperation is something that we put together um as sort of a background document that tells you sort of a timeline, the progression of activities. And the resolution is copied after the one that um the city of Westman um put together. Feel free to take it any, any way you like. Um but what it says, the important parts of it are the, those sections, the, at the bottom that says that we support the efforts and goals. Continue, that we will continue to purchase, fit in, provide, provide leadership for this uh feasibility. And that um if we have resources to do so, and of course, I mean, everybody agrees, that city will continue to provide an appropriate share of financial system as staff time to complete the feasibility study. And that when required, we will provide letters of support for securing additional resources. As you know, um Congress and Trader has put in money for feasibility study and the um most recent um meeting of the Landfall's Heritage Area Coalition. We have cobbled together from I believe five sources, I've listed them I think in my meeting report, the um money to hire a uh part-time staff person. And we, this, we, so we've advertised for that and thanks to also Jim Lethard who helped to get those, get the word out. I've been called by a couple asking, asking about it, um and um so I think there's interest. This staff person will be the one that um finally begins to pull the groups together. Though we, uh we, we have a couple of workshops that we want to do in the communities and then also of course seek community input on what, where, when, why, how. Uh and one of the biggest things that I think um needs to be resolved is one of the boundaries of this, does it go from Salem up to Port Vancouver? Or does it go, as we've been stating it from the mouth of the tall since the mountain of the flatness? So and, and, and twice, where's in between? As you probably recall, it's a non-regulatory um you know uh boundary or a non-regulatory district. And uh through the National Parks Service, um there is several funding available when an area is declared a national heritage area. So all of that stuff though needs to be um looked at by public and all of us together to see, you know, whether we wanna do that. So any questions about this? If there are tweaks, you can give them to me or send them in to Nancy Iden, we'll put this on the next agenda for a formal uh discussion and adoption. Any concerns about it?
Um I guess a question, um. The discussion originally on staffing, um can you remind me how, how?
Ours is?
Yeah, it was, it was originally ten, then it was five, right?
Oh, no, they, we originally put, um I don't remember. We put five thou, we, we pledged five thousand dollars, up to five thousand dollars for um part of the landscape architectural students funding for Westland and we didn't use it.
Right.
So um we agreed to roll that five over and then we pledged another five, which I believe Scott Archer had said um we planned to place the parks for, because we didn't want it coming out of the business license.
Right, but we didn't.
Yeah, we made that.
Yeah, right.
No, we did, um I asked if, uh I think, I can't remember if it was a work session or no, the whip, it would have been. I think we had it not go around, that's not where you want it to come from and we need to talk about that some more.
What is the, what is the cost of the feasibility study?
I think it's two million, something like that. It's um, is that, what do you remember?
It's, it's been a while since I went to that, but I think it was probably roughly the two to four million and it's what other ones had, had kind of spent in case of that designation.
Right, and the uh, the nice thing about that is that contrary to some of the other studies, um which are just designated as a, you know, the study is blessed, will grow and fund the money. Ours actually comes with funding if it is approved by Congress and that will come from the National Parks budget.
So the only tweaking, I mean, and maybe we'll have to look at this longer and we'll, I'm sure we'll talk about it when it comes, uh it's just in section three and, and just um. Um not knowing the, the cost or the, the specific cost and not necessarily knowing the timeline, I think it's very hard for us to determine that we will continue to provide support. Um unless we have some, uh so, so some of the wording in there is a little too broad for me to be comfortable with. Um so I, I, um and who, who is it, and the availability of resources, et cetera, and, and stuff like that. I mean, this is, this is an amazing project and this is a project that we all want to, to continue. But um to say that we will continue to provide this financial backing, well, we don't really know, or at least I personally don't know if there is sense of that, um is, is a concern.
Um you're identified the fact that it is um a, a bit broad because we don't know. And so if you wish to add more caveats, you know, if you feel it's protective, um you know, I put in a pending availability of resources, but you, you could add some other words. The city will, I, I think, I think the overall thought is that do we want to support it if we can? And so the if, it's, it's the if we can piece and if you're more comfortable with words, you know, think of, think of a way to make it so that.
I think the one word concerns me as well.
And one, well, I'll just throw one, cause I, I'm a word guy, so I'll throw this in. You could say something like to the extent practicable and that way it, it takes in really all of that and allows us to work it through our measure process and it's. Cause we're all, all we're gonna have some kind of resource.
All right, that's my.
So if we just layer that practicable word on there, I think we probably have a problem.
I, I think that, that fits for me because that covers um, you know, desire and multiple, multiple things, so. So consider that and we can tweak it. Do you want to put that in now? You like, you all like that? No, no, we're not doing the action, but if you'd like to substitute that, it makes it easier to do it now, then, okay?
I'm fine.
Okay, we'll do that. Nancy, do you have that or do you? I'll get it to you, I'll get it. Okay, any other um changes or things, any questions you have about this? Alright, let's move on then to the next agenda item. Just jumped up here. I know it jumped. Um this is Jim's presentation on um the COLAs for our management team. Supervisor, not management.
Excuse me?
That's the supervisory and management.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners, uh this evening I'm presenting to you the uh, this is the, I guess the draft report for COLA for the management confidential supervisory employees. Uh it's two percent is what we're proposing this year, that mirrors the two percent that uh is contractually the police are getting and two percent that Aspen is getting. And, and also although not part of the city per se, but uh South Fork Water Board is also getting two percent. So uh this is in line with our, our compensation plan. It, it allows for um you know, the cost of living increase and also prevents compression uh in between the, the represented staff and the management staff. Uh and, and subject to your questions, uh and I'll be including this on the consent agenda for our next meeting.
Questions, question?
This is consistent, of course, with two, two years, I think.
That's correct, and it's also as, as was budgeted.
And South Fork adopted the two percent also because Oregon City had.
Their, their formula is a little different, theirs by, by CPI, but it's, it's all pretty much consistent with uh, with what's available for funding by budget.
I think you're good to go.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. City managers' reports.
Thank you, Your Honor. Um we just wanted to let you know that we uh have a draft contract now from Leland Associates, we'll be taking a look at that, trying to get it to your next CRC meeting. Um the library moved to the Carnegie is going very well and it is day or two ahead of schedule. According to the director, who we haven't seen very much of because he's been.
I saw her.
Yeah. Um I also wanna remind you and other folks that the library's last day at the Hilltop location uh is this Friday, June eleventh. The library will reopen at the Carnegie on Monday, June twenty-first. Uh and a note here from the staff, in the meantime, please visit the Friends of the Library bookstore at Center and Seventh. Plug there, I suppose. Uh the Community Service Director, Scott Archer, is uh, he left today to travel to Bend and he will be getting up early tomorrow to present a grant proposal. On a competitive grant award process that's, we're competing for a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant for the Kanema Park. Uh I did see the PowerPoint, it's, it's really neat and uh one addition that's gonna be if we're lucky enough to get their money. I do think it's very competitive though and uh the total project cost is about five hundred thousand, but we've got other partners. Uh when I saw the presentation, he said all of the buzz factors that I think the committee will be looking for, so I got my fingers, fingers crossed on that one.
Yeah, I just interrupt that, who, I don't, I didn't know the park was being improved and cleaned up right now, it just was awesome. Whoever did that, I don't know what staff did it, it was, it's opened up some new corridors, it just was amazing.
And then um Doug Taylor, our CIC uh discussion, Nancy Kreschler was there last night, she, this is just an example of something that our staff is gonna be starting to put together various things like this from different departments, just a copy of some of the projects. This is actually what Nancy handed out last night at their meeting and so just sort of an example of some of the projects that are going on in public works. And some of the information that we wanna share with the, each of the associations when we have a chance to interface with them. So I think.
Easy, and it's lovely, okay. I do.
Yeah, yeah, some of this did not come out of the CIC, I thought it did there, I don't think. Hold it in there. And that's unbelievable, I never looked back for something like that.
I have uh one thing and that is you have a letter that um I have Nancy to copy off for you. Um from uh Sherlin Petersen, practice kind of commissioner, says, you know, I'm sure of the wastewater uh partner, I forget what's called wastewater advisory committee. Nancy Kreschler went for me um last time, so I wasn't able to go. Um but we are, this committee is taking on um some new challenges. And so down there under those numbers, I just want you to be aware of those questions and will, um I have, I put this on under my report uh for the situation so that we can discuss this publicly and talk a little bit more about um how these questions might affect Oregon City. So I just call that your attention so you can maybe give it a, give a look before um, before we discuss it. Anything else, uh other suggestions, Adam?
Not a suggestion, and just a statement on a long-term issue.
Okay. We are adjourned.